All right, good morning. We are going to get started with an invocation from Pastor Taran Gaddis of Greater Bethel Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Caroline Smith of Girl Scouts Troop 290. Please stand for Pastor Gaddis.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to begin by thanking our mayor and the city -- citizens of the city for allowing me to come and share. The Word of God in Hebrews 4:16 says these words, "Let us approach the throne of grace with confidence so that we may receive mercy and find grace to help us in our time of need." If you will, you bow your heads as we approach the eternal throne room of God. Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come, your will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Thank you for this incredible gift of another day, to be alive and to participate in the privilege of prayer one more time. Father, in First Timothy 2, your word says for us first of all to pray for all people, asking you, God, to help them in acceding on their behalf and giving thanks for them. Pray this way for kings, governments, city leaders, officials, and all who are in authority so that we can live peaceful and quiet lives marked by goodness and dignity. We ask for your blessings, Father, on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. We pray for our mayor, David Holt. We pray for our council persons, and we pray for our city manager, Craig Freeman, and we pray for our city auditor and counselors and judges. Help our city leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but rather, "What do we need to learn, and how might we change things, and to whom do we need to listen?" Remind our city leaders, because we sometimes forget that we are not only leaders but servants responsible to serve and protect and respect each and every person, whether gay or straight, transgender, black, white, Hispanic, Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Native American, and even atheists. That they should protect our children, the elderly and the poor, those who are hungry and those who have no home, and those who are ill in body, mind, and spirit, the stranger and immigrant who finds their way to our city, to those who live in the margins, those who are alone, and those who are forgotten. Father, we give you our land, and we give you our home, and we give you our labor, and we give you our city. Look with favor on our community and protect our citizens and leaders, and enrich the city of Oklahoma City so that we can be a blessing to others. We pray that you would honor and lift up our communities. We pray, Father, and we thank you for just the opportunity to be servant leaders and servant leaders. Thank you for their hearts. Thank you for their sacrifice. We lift them up to you today, and may you continue to bless them. May you generously give them, each of them, what it is that they need, but most of all wisdom and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people of our great city. Grant them, dear Lord, our mayor, our council persons, city manager, and those that support the operations of the city of Oklahoma City, wisdom so that they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability, and prosperity to our city. Finally, Lord, we ask that you give the citizens that make up our great city a heart of wisdom as well. May your wisdom produce in us creative ideas, solutions to problems, and new technologies and products. May you give us sound counsel and good judgment to help make good decisions, and may you also give us great knowledge, understanding, and the power so that we may live skillfully and give back what is good and excellent to our community. Father, empower your people to do good and shun evil. This we pray, in the powerful and prolific name of our precious Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, who hung, bled, and died, and was resurrected, so that we might have life and live life more abundantly. Amen.
Please join me while we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you both very, very much. All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we have a couple items under Office of the Mayor, item three. We'll begin with 3A, Resolution of Commendation, and I will make my way to the front for that presentation, and I will meet Kathy there. Well, at the end of this month, there are abouts -- a very long and amazingly successful career of public service will transition into a new career. This isn't retirement. This is -- but this is retirement from public service, although I still suspect you'll find many, many ways to make our city a better place in the months and years ahead. But it's going to be a little different, and we won't see Kathy quite in the same way moving forward. But for four decades, Kathy O'Connor has been a huge part of this renaissance that we have enjoyed in Oklahoma City, and it simply wouldn't have been the same without her. And we're going to learn a little bit more about her, maybe even things you didn't know, even if you think you're a Kathy fan, because we've got a pretty good resolution here, so settle in. But 40 years leaves a lot of legacy, so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Kathy O'Connor's family relocated to Oklahoma from Fulton, Maryland upon her father's retirement, she attended the University of Oklahoma and earned her BA and Master of Public Administration. She began her career with the city of Oklahoma City in 1981 as an intern in the water department while an undergraduate student at OU. And whereas Kathy served in many different capacities with the city, including budget director and business manager for the Oklahoma City Fire Department, where she led the financial aspects of the city's recovery efforts following the bombing of the Alfred P. Murrah Federal Building. And whereas Kathy also served as finance director and assistant city manager, where she was a critical contributor to many successful initiatives, including the creation of the city's Economic Development Program. And whereas Kathy has served as president and CEO of the Alliance for Economic Development of Oklahoma City since its formation 10 years ago. And whereas, in her senior city positions and at the alliance, Kathy has been instrumental in the city's largest development projects over the past 20 years. Her work helped ensure the success of the MAPS III projects, redevelopment of the Skirvin-Hilton, recruitment of Dell, GE's global energy research facilities, the MAPS IV Innovation District, and the creation of the city's Strategic Investment Program, locally funded job creation program. And whereas Kathy's vision led to the creation of TIF districts, including the Cord Ashore TIF district in the area surrounding Scissor Tail Park. Her work to locate and incentivize the Omni Hotel next to our new convention center has formed the anchor that will attract other development around the park and will accelerate economic development returns to Oklahoma City for years to come. And whereas Kathy is committed to the redevelopment of distressed areas, she worked with the city to create a TIF district for Northeast Oklahoma City in 2015 and worked with local developers on the award-winning East Point project. She led efforts to create a local funding source for affordable housing, and she has worked with small developers and investors to encourage construction of single-family homes in neighborhoods targeted for investment. And whereas Kathy is particularly proud of her work on the homeland development at Northeast 36th and Lincoln, which was long considered a food desert. She worked for years with city council and community stakeholders to find the right grocery partner, identify investors and the right lenders, acquire new market tax credits, and accumulate the acreage needed for this 30,000-square-foot full grocery store, which opened to great acclaim in September 2021. And whereas Kathy has been active in a variety of community organizations. She is a founding member of Oklahoma Crew, the Organization for Women in Commercial Real Estate, and she currently serves on the board for the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools, the United Way of Central Oklahoma, Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership, and the Innovation District. She has served on the Board of Directors for the Youth Leadership Exchange, the YMCA of Greater Oklahoma City, Leadership Oklahoma City Alumni Association, the Committee of 100, and the Urban League. She is a graduate of Leadership Oklahoma City and Leadership Oklahoma. And whereas, she was honored as the 2021 Dean A. McGee Award recipient for her lifelong contributions to the development and quality of life of downtown Oklahoma City. In 2009, she received Woman of the Year Award by the Journal Record and the Stanley Draper Award from Downtown Oklahoma City, Inc. She has also received the Byliner Award from the Association for Women in Communications. And whereas Kathy has served our city with the courage to take risks, the tenacity to see even the most challenging, complex projects to the finish line, the awareness that it takes many people to shape the direction and growth of our city, and the ability to build those coalitions. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby honor Kathy O'Connor for her dedicated service to the city of Oklahoma City.
Now, as long as that was, there are probably people in the audience who were thinking, "Well, what about this, and what about that?" It's true. We made the font, however, as small as we possibly could, people. So there is so much to say about Kathy O'Connor, and even no less than the President of the United States was talking about your programs yesterday. So we are incredibly grateful for your service, and we certainly want to honor that with passage of this resolution. We'll probably move into some comments from members of the council and you as well, but why don't we go ahead and handle the business in case lest we forget? So let's go ahead and move this resolution. We've got a motion and a second. I would like to vote aye. Please cast your votes as well. Passes unanimously, as you would have hoped for and expected, yes. One last vote. Is there any member -- I suspect there may be some members of the council, or Craig, who want to say a few words. Not everybody has to, but we'll just go left to right. Todd?
Kathy, I would just like to say I really appreciated you, especially in the time on the Economic Development Trust Board. And, you know, when I first joined council, a lot of these projects were so complicated, and I really, really appreciated you taking your time to explain to me how they work, how it's a pay-for-play, more or less. And I just, I really appreciate it, appreciate your help with me, and I appreciate everything that you've done for the city, and really will miss working with you. Thank you.
Yeah, so Kathy, I just want to say thanks to you. Kathy's been a friend of mine for many years, a mentor to me. I actually worked with her, I don't know, we back up probably 30 years at least, you know, it's close to that, that I've actually worked with her and then directly for her for many years. And so Kathy's been a mentor to me and a friend, and even in our relationship now at the alliance, we continued that, and so I just appreciate the opportunity to work with you and all that you've done within our organization. There's so many things that we still have now. We just had such a long stretch of good financial management. You were a big part of that foundation that carried on and taught a lot of us who worked in finance after you, the things that we needed to carry on, and just your leadership and all the visionary leadership you've provided and developed in the city. I'm really grateful for that and grateful to you for your friendship. Glad we get to continue working with you, just in a different role now.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a little bit different perspective, serving on the board of the Alliance for Economic Development, and a lot of the ideas and projects that come before the council come to us in a almost completed manner. And there's always a lot of work, a lot of problems that Kathy digs in and resolves before they get to us and get out to the public. So she makes it seem very easy when she makes her presentation before us, but truly, I know there's a lot of hard work that goes into all of these projects that she's been greatly involved with. And not just in the core part of downtown, she's been helpful in Ward 5 in terms of helping us with retail development, and was especially helpful in the Capitol Hill area with providing funding through a TIF for the Oklahoma City Community Colleges Capitol Hill Outreach Facility. So she's done a lot for the entire city and has just done a tremendous job. Thankfully, she'll still be here in the city, but unfortunately, not in as close of a role with us as what she has been. But thank you very much, Kathy, for all you've done for the city.
Well, I'll say, Ms. Kathy, I met you as I was running officially, and I had heard your name and understood the work that you've done. And after I was elected, we went to work, and while we have agreed on some things, we've agreed to disagree on other things, and disagreed on others, we have been able to do some great work while I've been here, so I do appreciate that. I do appreciate you listening when we were able to have those conversations, and I wish you well in this future endeavor for yourself and in your personal life, and congratulations to you.
Kathy, when I think of you, there are two words that come to mind. Number one is preparation, and number two is determination. And without your preparation, after you became prepared, without that preparation and without that determination, Oklahoma City would not be where it is today. And I think oftentimes you have not gotten enough credit for how difficult your job is. I remember one night, I think it was after the Omni agreement was cut, you were with your staff and the city manager and a group of lawyers, and there are two things that stick out about seeing you that evening. Number one, you were relieved, a deal had been cut. But number two, you were just exhausted, and you could tell it. And I just want people to know how hard your job is, and I want them also to know the incredible things you've done, and I wrote these down, with retail strategy, renewal development programs, job creation, and redevelopment opportunities. All those things are going to accelerate what happens in Oklahoma City over the next 20 years, and it's because of you. And while we may have not have said thank you often enough, we are saying thank you today, and so all I can say is God bless you, good luck, you will be missed.
May.
Oh, yes, of course, James.
I know, we started with Todd because he's on that fancy board. I just, you've been very kind to me, Kathy, since I took office, and that's really the most important thing I can say, is not only have you been kind, but anytime I've had questions about how we might be able to do some good for Ward 2, you've answered them with wisdom and with such knowledge, and the kindness part just really stands out to me, and I really appreciate that, and I hope you just keep that close to your heart and just continue with it. Thank you.
You know, Kathy, when I see all the amazing accomplishments on this resolution, I'm thinking about how many of them -- if city leaders had gone to somebody like you in many of these cases and said, "Is this possible?", most people would have said, "No", and on so many of these projects. And that wasn't really true. Nothing is impossible, right? But it was, but they would have said no because it was so very hard. And your answer, time and time again, as documented here, was, "Well, yes, if." And some of the times those ifs were preposterous, but you chased them and you made them happen. And you had, as was said here, as was said by members of council, you just had that incredible tenacity, determination, persistence, however you want to describe it, to make the impossible happen in our city. And there's so many projects downtown and across the city and in northeast that simply wouldn't have happened if mere mortals had been in your roles. And so thank you so much for all that you have meant to our city. And as I said earlier, I know that this, in some ways, your service doesn't end, you're still going to be a part, I think, of some exciting things in our city, just in a little different capacity. Well, with that, we would love to hear a few words from you, if you're all -- if you're all ready now, after all of that. So please, Kathy, we'd love to hear a few thoughts.
Well, thank you, and thank you to the mayor and city council and to Craig. I really appreciate, I've appreciated working with all of you. I've appreciated all the city councils that I've worked with, and, you know, going back 40 years, there've been some interesting dynamics on the city council in the past that were a challenge. But I really think that you all are a great group of people and really understand the value of innovation and working together and creativity to solve problems. You know, when I was working on the Mura funding reimbursements from FEMA after the Mura bombing, the city manager called me the Bulldog of City Hall, and it was in a newspaper article, and a friend of mine brought me a bulldog jigsaw puzzle to do, and, you know, so this tenacity has been going on a long time. It's probably just part of the way that I'm wired. I really want to thank all the people that I've worked with at the city, and there've been a lot of you. In particular, I want to thank the Economic Development Staff, Brent Bryant, Wiley Williams, Joanna and Lacey. You've just been instrumental to helping me achieve some very interesting, challenging projects over the last, mostly in the last 20 years, let's say. I also want to thank my staff. Most of the staff is here this morning. I really appreciate you. We are very dedicated to making Oklahoma City a better place for everybody, and I think you can take a great deal of pride in the work that we've done together and the work that you'll continue to do. I think one of the great, the secret sauce, if you want to say, in Oklahoma City has been this ability to all pull the rope in the same direction. And I mean, it takes a strong private sector, it takes nonprofits, it takes the Chamber of Commerce, and organizations like the Alliance and the city, all working together to make this a better place. And I really think that that is what is so different about Oklahoma City, and that this ability to not be very territorial and understand that together we can really build a better Finally, I want to introduce my fiance, Ross Tarkington. He's here this morning with me, and I see many friends in the audience, so I want to thank you all for being here, and I really appreciate this recognition.
Absolutely. Let's hear it for Kathy.
This is Joyce DeKey.
That's an appointment of Meg, it's a reappointment of Meg McElhany to serve on Katba. We can handle that as the council desires. Sorry, I forgot to get all the way in. I'd like to vote yes. Passes unanimously. And now items from council. We have one here, item 4A, a resolution of commendation for Catherine Montgomery. And we don't have an author listed here, but...
Councilwoman Nice and I have sponsored this. As I mentioned in my comments from council at our last meeting, I had just learned about Catherine's passing a few days before the meeting and wanted to find a way to honor her and invited some of her friends and family to give input, provide the language for this resolution, because I know in the time that I've been on council, the times that I've connected with Catherine, she was always just a huge advocate and servant around preserving our history and telling Oklahoma City's story, the good and maybe not so good parts of it. And so, Councilwoman, if you have anything to say, maybe you can do that right now. And then I know we wanted to ask Amy to read the resolution.
Actually, if you don't mind, I'll make my comments after. Whereas Catherine Montgomery served Oklahoma City as an architect and historic preservationist with passion, enthusiasm, and expertise for over two decades. She worked for the Oklahoma Historical Society, SHPO, Oklahoma City Planning Department, and most recently was the president and founder of Preservation and Design Studio. And whereas, while with the city, Catherine worked as a historic preservation officer from January 2009 to January 2013. She was responsible for managing all functions of the Historic Preservation Commission, including design review for the city's nine historic districts. Catherine oversaw significant revisions to the Historic Preservation Commission's standards and guidelines, resulting in the 2012 adoption of the Design and Sustainability Standards and Guidelines for Oklahoma City's Historic Districts. And whereas Catherine sought to make the Historic Preservation Review Process more accessible to applicants by hosting opportunities for applicants to meet with staff to review and submit their applications. She was instrumental in the development of the Building Conservation and Rehabilitation Guidelines adopted by Oklahoma City's Design Review Districts to aid in their consideration of Oklahoma City's historic resources. And whereas, in 2011, Catherine led the effort to host the city's first Historic Preservation Expo, utilizing numerous grants and sponsors to bring in speakers and exhibits on the benefits of historic preservation. Catherine oversaw the completion of a four-phase, intensive-level survey of downtown Oklahoma City documenting dozens of potential historic districts and hundreds of historic buildings. And whereas Catherine also served on many boards, including the AIA Central Oklahoma Chapter as Secretary, President-elect, President and Past President, the AIA Oklahoma Chapter as Director, Vice President, President, and Past President, and as the trustee for the Oklahoma City Foundation for Architecture. And whereas her passion was historic preservation and architecture, and her many projects in Oklahoma City will be enjoyed by citizens and visitors for years. Those projects include the Skirvin Hotel, Calvary Baptist Church, Villa Teresa, Oklahoma National Guard Armory, the Walcourt Building, Jewel Theater, Sunbeam Home, Cyber Apartment Hotel, Classen Tower, Sidney and Mary Lyons House, First Christian Church, and Brockway Center, to name a few. And whereas Catherine mentored those around her, sharing her passion for historic preservation. She mentored high school girls interested in... She mentored high school girls interested in architecture at Francis Tuttle, students at the University of Oklahoma, her employees and coworkers, and always had time to advise the community. And whereas Oklahoma City lost a fierce advocate of historic preservation with Catherine's passing, but is comforted and thankful that her presence will live on through the remarkable work she began. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend and express great appreciation to Catherine Montgomery for her tremendous contributions to the betterment of Oklahoma City. Thank you for reading that for us. Before we ask her, her husband to come up, Mr. Alexander Montgomery, I do want to make just a couple of comments. And I know for us, we know the work she's done in Oklahoma City, but I just want us to also keep in mind the work that she's done across this state. Muskogee, Ardmore, Alva, Tulsa, we're looking at Medill, Gaiman, Clearmore, McAllister, Sepulpa, Otoka and Guthrie. Her work lives on. And had it not been for Ms. Catherine Montgomery, we would not have been able to save the Brockway Center. So, I am thankful for her as far as the work that she helped me to understand and learn with the preservation aspect. And also, I know some of her, her latter work, up until her passing, she was working on the First Christian Church with the National Association Jazz and Legacy Museum, the creation of that, also with Tulsa as far as the Greenwood District and some areas to preserve those places, among other things. So, her, her legacy has definitely been acknowledged for the work. And to Mr. Montgomery, thank you for sharing her with us. We appreciate you. And anytime I'd see her, I'd see you right behind her. So, you are truly a part of her work and her legacy, and we appreciate the work that you all have been able to do together. Thank you. And if you don't mind, we'd love for you to come up and have a few words.
Nikki, thank you very much. JoBeth, thank you very much. The members of the city council, thank you very much also. We lost somebody very special. It was nice listening to Kathy O'Connor. The two Cathys worked a lot together. And so, it's kind of appropriate that they're on the same stage again. The Skirvin Hotel linked Catherine to many, many people. She believed in preservation because she believed a lot of the buildings tell stories. And if we lose those buildings, we lose those stories. I remember when the Skirvin opened up, and there was this older couple walking around the building, and they, they were describing what it meant to them and remembering what it was and the things that they did there. And it would give them something that they could tell their grandchildren, their grandchildren could actually go and see and touch and feel. This state, this city has an amazing history. And she wanted to do whatever everything she could to preserve it. She didn't always win. I remember the YMCA building, A building that got torn down for a parking lot, and every time we drove by, I got grief because it was a parking lot, parking structure. But she had some wins too. The Brockway House was a huge victory for her because she believed the history of this state includes everybody, and everybody's history needs to be recognized. She worked well in Midtown, creating that place where people now go hang out. Her legacy will live on, but the legacy is just not in the buildings that she saved as Nikki, as the resolution said and Nikki talked about. It's the people that she influenced, the people from her employees to the contractors, to the developers, that she kind of helped them understand that you don't have to tear something down to use it again, that there's a possibility to reuse things and keep the history, keep the stories alive. And so, again, I'm thankful for the resolution. I'm thankful for the city council. Catherine came here many times, and sometimes it was fun and sometimes it wasn't so fun. But she always kept fighting. If she lost the battle, she'd get back up and go find something else and fight twice as hard. So, she never quit, she never stopped. And that is something that we all can learn from and work on doing. So, again, I thank you very much for this.
May I add something to? You don't have to get back up. I just saw something in your eyes, and I hope that, I hope the word love, I hope you just carry that with you. I can see it in your eyes. I can see it. And yeah, there it is in that smile too. So, anytime it ever feels not so bright out, the love that you all poured into those buildings, just remember the love that you two shared, please. I can feel it right now, so.
We do want to adopt this resolution, so do we want to make a motion for that? Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Any other further thoughts on this topic?
I'm hoping, Mayor, that we can get a copy and make sure that the family receives it.
Absolutely. All the copies you need. And thank you. Thank you, as was said earlier, thank you for giving us Catherine and what a legacy she leaves. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on now to item five, city manager reports. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, we have one report this morning. Zach Craig, the president of the city's Convention and Visitors Bureau, is here just to make a quick update on their second quarter report.
Well, good morning, everyone. What an incredible morning so far, just a great celebration of the two Cathys. And just real quickly, on behalf of the entire hospitality community, I want to personally thank both of them for all the service that they provided to Oklahoma City. I'm here to officially submit our second quarter report that we submitted back in January for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Be more than happy to take any questions as it relates to the second quarter. But now, since we're in mid-March, I, I, I thought it was appropriate to give you a further update on the visitation economy in our organization. And I want to start off by sharing with you really good news that year-to-date for our fiscal year, through the month of February's report, we are still exceeding pre-pandemic levels for hotel tax collections. Right now, year-to-date, up about a half million versus fiscal year 20. In addition to that, really excited to share that currently, we're probably on the biggest and best stretch that we've had with the brand-new Convention Center. And that started last week with the Heartland Payment Systems Diamond Conference that we welcomed about 1,100 attendees to Oklahoma City. This week, we, we welcomed two really important conferences to Oklahoma City, but one of note is Team National, which is a national marketing agency. 4,000 attendees are going to converge on the city this week for that, and many more forthcoming until we get to the, the middle of April and welcome our runners back for the Memorial Marathon. And then finally, before I go to a brief presentation, I've got five or six slides to share with you this morning, I have to commend Florence's Restaurant. And I'm sure that you know, but if you're not, Florence's recently just was awarded a James Beard Foundation Award for one of America's Best Classic Restaurants, and it is a big honor for them. It is our first and only historically restaurant recognized by the James Beard Foundation. So, everyone affiliated with Florence's Restaurant, just a big congratulations for you all. And if we'll turn to the presentation, I wanted to share something with you this morning that I felt like would add value. In the past, I've talked that it's really important for us as stewards of public monies to make really educated decisions with our marketing dollars. And one way that we do that is to use data. And back in July, we signed a contract with a data insights company called Zartico. And I want to walk through a few slides with you about this powerful company. Zartico is a great company because they give us great insights, but in addition, they really handle their data in, in a privacy setting. Specifically, all the data is anonymized when it, once it gets to them and once it gets to our organization. But if we can go through the, the slides real quickly, Zartico helps us answer a few questions. A few of those are up on the screen right now. One of those is when a, when a visitor comes to our destination, what is their journey that they take? In addition to that, what are the emerging markets that are coming to Oklahoma City, specifically for this example and this deck, over the course of 2021? See if I can advance it here. Okay. One of the things that we look at is top origin market, and you can see some of the obvious markets at the top of this list. This is visitors in volume. Dallas is there, Tulsa's there, Wichita's there as well. But what's really interesting to me is in the center section, we're seeing a consistent trend from visitors from central and south Texas, from Kansas City, from Colorado as a whole, but specifically Denver as well. Not only do we look at that from a volume standpoint, still having a little challenges here with PowerPoint, but a volume standpoint, but we also look at that from a spend standpoint. And it's interesting, there's some inverse relationships with volume and spend in our market, but there's other, there's other relationships that are, are not directly correlated, meaning some of the visitors that are coming are actually spending less money but higher volume and vice versa. And this is really educational for us as a group. If we'll go to the next slide, thank you, Jane. No, this is not a picture of the Milky Way. This is a picture of Oklahoma City and really the visitation movement that we're tracking versus 2021. And what I think is really interesting is, is we dive into specific examples. Let's say the Women's College World Series for those two weeks that they're here in June. We can see that the movement, not only from the stadium, but we can see folks and how they go to certain restaurants in neighborhoods, and how they specifically go to certain wards. And that helps us for a number of reasons, but it actually helps us. One, one example is to service them very well when they return the next year. Obviously, like many private businesses, we track organic website activity. At the bottom right, you'll see some of those emerging markets that I made reference to earlier. What I find fascinating though is we dive deeper into the intelligence. We can see how these emerging markets are interacting with certain landing pages that we have on visitokc.com, with certain content, with certain videos. Why is that helpful and why am I sharing that? I'm doing that because that helps us customize the ads that we serve up to them throughout the given year. And just one more example before I close, we have numerous dashboards. Here's a dashboard for me of interest, and that's San Antonio. Our visitors from San Antonio historically really haven't seen a lot of organic activity. You can see their affinity credit card purchases within the market and the sectors that they're purchasing in. You can see that a bulk of those folks, they stay overnight when they come to Oklahoma City, obviously. What I find interesting, when I compare a market like San Antonio versus a Dallas, for example, is the points of interest that they go to that differs from some of these other markets. So, you'll see that San Antonio, those visitors, they come to the Memorial, they go to the Civic Center Music Hall, they go to the Oklahoma City Museum of Art. And this really differs, if we put a dashboard up here, let's say, from Tulsa or Denver or somewhere else. So, just another example of how we're using intelligence to engage with customers that come to Oklahoma City. And in summary, not only does this make us methodical marketers, but it helps us in so many other ways. Couple of those ways. Number one, it can help us attract more conventions. It can help us state a case for more non-stop flights to Will Rogers World Airport. It can help us with local and national developers, if they're looking at Oklahoma City and doing a feasibility study for a hospitality development. And then finally, it can help us with their private business stakeholders, and as we work with them to not only make their marketing dollars stronger, but also make our marketing dollars stronger as well. And so, a lot of information there in a quick minute, but hopefully that added value. And at this point, I'll pause if you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm curious, it feels a little creepy that you're able to kind of collect some of this data. Can you talk about how Zartico does that, specifically for like the movements? I'm curious how you're able to filter out like visitors versus residents and kind of get some of that, kind of drill down to that data.
Sure. Lot of that, I want to repeat that this information is anonymized. And so, that's when we searched these companies, that was really important to us as it comes through Zartico and comes through us. There is geolocation data that's being pulled. We geofence different points of attractions. So, how do I know that visitors come to the Oklahoma City Museum of Art? I know that because we've, we've, we've put a geofence around those different attractions and we're monitoring that. And when we go to neighborhood meetings and we, we meet with these individual businesses, we're here to share this information and help them out. So, that's how we do it. From an affinity credit card standpoint, they really look at zip codes from, from the credit card holders themselves.
Interesting. Thank you so much.
Sure.
With regard to the Convention Center, can you give us a picture of the number of prospects that are currently looking at the Convention Center, people that have signed up and committed? And is that improving over the last six months? And what do we expect for the next 18 months or so, please?
Sure, sure. Well, first, Councilman, I know last time I was here, you'd requested some information. And since then, I've, I've spoken with Debbie Martin and Al Rojas, who's the general manager of the Oklahoma City Convention Center, and we're, we're getting on a cadence to make sure we deliver that information to you. Speak just directly to citywides. That's multiple hotel bookings that also go to our Convention Center. You know, pre-pandemic with the Cox Center, we had approximately 10 citywides in this market. For fiscal year 22, there's been some ups and downs with the variance, but right now we've got 13 definite citywides that are in our market for this given fiscal year. Could have one or two more by the end of the year, but that's how we're going to finish for fiscal year 22. Already for fiscal year 23, we have 15 what we call tentative and definite. And then for the following year, we have 13 tentatives and definite. So, we're seeing a lot of movement. What I like to look at is really funnel activity from people coming to the market, from new conferences interested in Oklahoma City, and really the year-over-year activity from site inspections to lead volume is substantial. So, it's exciting.
Well, we, we want to thank Heartland and Team National for choosing Oklahoma City for their conventions. And can you give those numbers again? Did you say Team National is on the magnitude of 11,000?
So, Heartland Payment Systems last week had approximately 1,100 attendees here. And Team National this week, as they converge in Oklahoma City, they're going to have approximately 4,000 attendees.
Will that be the largest convention that's been at the Convention Center so far?
Not, not quite, but it's, it's pretty close.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And that's all the presentations that we have. We just have claims and payroll and that can be found on OKC.gov.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item six, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item seven, request for uncontested continuances. So listed on the agenda, on the original agenda is item 11A, 11N, 11O. Also listed was item 9X. That was a typo. That should have been 11X. And so a correction was properly noticed at 7:40 AM yesterday, and everybody should have received that. And so it is actually now 11X that is also stricken. Is there anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, starting on page 11, on item 11L, the applicant has requested to defer this item to the 29th of March. This is S P U D 1375. Going on to page 12, item 11T1, dilapidated structures. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 3715 North Phillips Avenue, the owner is removed. Item C, 1954 Northwest 10th Street, the owner is removed. Item D, 743 Northeast 36th Street, the owner has removed. On page 12, item 11U1, unsecured structures. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 3215 North Francis Avenue, the owner is secured. Item B, I'm sorry, item D, 5112 Madera Terrace, the owner is secured. Item E, 1340 Magdalena Drive, the owner is secured. Item F, 924 Oakdale Drive, the owner is secured. Item H, 127 Southeast 33rd Street, the owner is secured. Item J, 1114 Northwest 42nd Street, the owner is secured. And item O, 208 Northwest 85th Street, the owner has secured. On page 13, item 11V1, abandoned buildings. All of these will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 3215 North Francis Avenue, the owner is secured. Item D, 5112 Madera Terrace, the owner is secured. Item E, 1340 Magdalena Drive, the owner is secured. Item F, 924 Oakdale Drive, the owner is secured. Item G, 3715 North Phillips Avenue, the owner is secured. Item L, 1114 Northwest 42nd Street, the owner is secured. And item Q, 208 Northwest 85th, 85th Street, the owner has secured. And that's all the items that I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Item eight is revocable permits and events. Item 8A is a revocable permit with Infant Crisis Services for the Infant Crisis Services 5K on April 9th using Bluff Creek Park. And we have Katie Castle, who has signed up to speak.
Hi, good morning. How are you guys?
Good.
So Infant Crisis Services Teen Board is actually putting on our 5K event on the 9th of April. So a group of 30 high school students who are working to further our mission, which is to provide food formula and diapers for babies and toddlers birth until age four. So we're putting on that event to try to raise funds for our mission. Looking forward to it.
Great. Well, this is in Ward 8. You actually got two runs in Ward 8.
It's amazing.
Councilman Stone Cypher, that's rare.
We are so glad you're here today. I think the one important thing to point out is that Bluff Creek, if you haven't been there, it's a beautiful place to go. It has a loop trail that's almost four miles. In the publications that talk about it, they say it takes about an hour and 35 minutes to walk that almost four miles. I think it takes me a little longer, but it's a great trail and we're happy to have the event there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll move for its approval at this time.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Have a great event. Thank you. And now we have 8B. This is a revocable permit with the Quail Community Foundation. I suspect that's the Quail Creek Community Foundation, but for the 2022 Creek Run on March 26th, using City Right Way and Berta Fay Rex, Quail Creek Park. And we have, is it Janaye?
Janaye Allen, yes.
Okay, very good. Welcome.
Thank you. And yes, this is our annual run. We haven't had it since 2020, or I guess 2019, given the pandemic. So we're back after a couple of years. And this year, we're offering a one mile fun run, a 5K, and then we've added a 10K. And it'll be the same route. So it starts from Quail Creek Park and then goes up almost to 122nd, but it stays in the southern half of the neighborhood. And afterwards, we'll have some food trucks and face painters and just some other family fun at the Quail Creek Park. So yeah, that'll take place March 26th. Then we use the proceeds for beautification efforts of the neighborhood and also for the Quail Creek Park.
Did you hear me? We're so glad we're getting to have this event again after a delay. And it's a great park, the Berta Fay Rex Park. For those of you don't, that don't know, Berta Fay was married to John Rex, who John Rex Elementary School is named after. And if you ever knew the two of them, they were inseparable. And I always thought it should have been the, the John and Berta Fay Elementary School. But Berta Fay got a wonderful neighborhood park. It's a great place to go and we look forward to the event and thank you for having it. And I'll move for its approval at this time.
We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we've got, we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. And we've got items A through H on the OC MFA agenda. We could take those with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Then we now adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A and B. And actually is a presentation on item A.
Yes, yes. David Todd, our MAPS Director, MAPS Programs Director is here to give his presentation on this operating agreement.
Good morning, David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. This is for the operating partner for the Innovation Hall. This agreement is with the Innovation District for the day-to-day operations of the Innovation Hall. This also includes creation and implementation of the programs and events within the Innovation Hall. This will be a state-of-the-art facility to serve as the primary gathering space for Innovation District in order to grow the innovation economy in the city of Oklahoma City and surrounding communities. This will include collaboration across diverse sections, including healthcare, bioscience, aerospace, and unmanned systems, specialized manufacturing, academia, technology, and energy to spark new ideas and create new businesses and new jobs. Pardon me, to achieve, the activities to achieve this objective are anticipated to include, but not necessarily be limited to hiring of staff, managing the facility, developing outreach programs, workforce development training to support high-tech, high-growth industries such as bio, this is a tough word, biopharmaceutical manufacturing. Learning academies for STEM-related knowledge and skills such as coding classes for all ages. Programming and events related to innovation and entrepren- entrepren- entrepreneurship. There's another one. By providing a physical anchor to Oklahoma City's Innovation District, Innovation Hall will advance the city's overreaching objective of extending the transformational power of maps across the city and to all residents. One of the important things that was stressed all during pre-MAPS, as I can refer to it, was measurable benchmarks. So this one does have measurable benchmarks in it, and I'll go through those real quickly. Visitors to the facility, this should be measured generally in terms of the number, diversity, and industry affiliation. Operators should aim to have at least 6,000 visitors to the facility in the first full year of operation. Programming. A summary of programming which at a minimum should be in the areas of community development, entrepreneurship, placemaking, innovation academy, and innovation network, including attendance statistics. Operators should aim to have at least 50 programs and events during the first full year of operation. Social media and website engagement. Operators shall monitor social media, website, and email analytics to gauge whether it is reaching all of its target audience. During the first full year of operation, operators should aim to grow its followers across Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, LinkedIn, or similar platforms by at least 10%. It should aim for email growth of approximately 20% for distribution list growth and open, and open rate, and an open rate above 20%. Room and rental, event rental data. Operators shall measure the number of room and event rentals from outside organizations for meetings, events, and other uses. Operators should aim to have at least 150 bookings for meetings and events in the first full year of operation. Community engagement. Operators shall strive to have an open and transparent dialogue around what is happening in Innovation Hall. Operators shall measure and collect data from the number of community engagement sessions it holds in order to help ensure it is delivering on its mission. Operators shall offer reduced room and space rentals for appropriate community groups, particularly from nearby neighborhoods, institutions, and organizations serving northeast Oklahoma City. Operators should aim to hold at least quarterly community engagement sessions with its northeast community partners. Partnerships formed, operators shall operate Innovation Hall as a collaborative space. Operators shall measure the partnerships it forms with organizations and shall also use its best efforts to measure or monitor partnerships form because of Innovation Hall. Operators shall aim to create and nurture multiple beneficial partnerships consistent with its mission. The agreement also allows that these be tweaked through the years. They can be added, they can be taken out, the numbers can be changed. So it's, it's very flexible, but those are the benchmarks that we'll start off with. This agreement is for a period of 10 years and can be renewed as appropriate. This agreement was advertised in accordance with our usual procedures. While only one person was, one response was received, the statement of qualifications was thoroughly reviewed by a five-person review panel, including a member of the Subcommittee and Advisory Board. It was found not only to be responsive to the RFQ, but a very good proposal, meeting the requirements of the RFQ as requested. With that recommendation, the proposal was sent to the Innovation District Subcommittee and the MAPS for Citizens Advisory Board. Both groups recommend approval to you today.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have a few.
Good.
First, as we're looking at some of these benchmarks, I became concerned when you said that some of these can be taken out and also moved around. So how will we know as, will we as council be notified that something has been taken out?
I believe that it states that the city manager has that authority, but we could, you know, commit to you that if we change any of those, we'll, we'll bring them to you.
I would prefer that only because of concerns of, of some of the, the things that I am reading and for those benchmarks that have already been produced and submitted. As we look at also some of the things as those benchmarks are expected to bring, I am curious for those benchmarks where we have done the work thus far for this Innovation District to, other than just submitting a proposal, be deemed the best fit in already doing that work? I'm, I'm sure maybe someone from Innovation District can speak to that.
Katie Bourne's here if she wants to speak on, on that. You know, like I said, the benchmarks can be adjusted year to year. Starting off fresh without any previous experience, it's just a starting point.
Yes and no. As an Innovation District that has been formed for at least a few years now, there should be some benchmarks that they have set as a district for themselves, as a board, that they have been able to be meet. And I'm, I'm curious to know what those have been thus far.
Okay, the current ones, Katie?
Good morning, I'm Katie Bourne with the Oklahoma City Innovation District. Thank you for this opportunity. Councilwoman Nice, if I understand your question, you're one who know more about benchmarks that have existed and benchmarks for the plan for the future? Is that correct? We have produced, this is our third year of operation, and we produced this last year at the conclusion of the year, our inaugural annual impact report. So we established some of the, the benchmarks and metrics that we have started tracking. The other thing that we have been doing in the past few months is traveling to other Innovation Districts and doing a lot of interviews and research to assess all of the benchmarks that we not, might not be aware of, so that we can enhance our annual impact report. And in these next two years, as we build out our plans for operating Innovation Hall, we'll be enhancing those as well. So in my estimation, we'll be adding benchmarks. I don't anticipate ever taking any away. I think it was just unfortunate language, but we intend to add additional.
Well, if that's unfortunate language, is there a way we can just remove that from the language? So that will not be a factor as far as removing bench, as some of these particular benchmarks? Because again, I am concerned as we get further down the road, that if some of these, some of these do not meet the requirements or just don't get the interaction or engagement from the expectation of what that should be, it could be removed. And that, that concerns me as we're looking to build and gain and keep trust and transparency for the people that it is supposed to serve around there.
I think, I think most likely the anticipated removal would only have been considered in the context of just unhelpful data. You know, if that ever happened, that it's something was just completely, ends up being completely irrelevant or, but I'm fine with changing the language because again, we want robust metrics and we are in the process of adding more and, and really doing a lot of really intensive work to make sure that we have really great metrics and that we achieve them.
Okay. So as far as our municipal counselor, how would we be able to do that? And I guess the question more so is instead of can be taken out, I would like to say more benchmarks may be added, oh, I'm sorry, more benchmarks may be added and/or moved around. That's what I've, I've wrote down, what I've heard.
So I'm Laura McDevitt in the city attorney's office and I've worked with the Oklahoma City Innovation District on this agreement. The way that the contract reads now, the, is that the operator will be required to submit an annual report to the city manager, and the city manager can request a presentation annually. But in order to change any of the benchmarks, that would require a contract amendment. So that would be coming back to council for approval.
Okay. You don't see anything? Where exactly is that?
I'm just curious where the language where it says they're going to be taken out, because I'm just looking through and I'm not finding it. The section on measurable benchmarks is 7.3, starts on page 6. It doesn't specifically say that, that a contract amendment would be required, but it doesn't really give any flexibility. So because there's no flexibility in the contract to change those benchmarks, it would require an amendment to come back to council.
Okay. Well, I want to make it plain again that I would like for us to keep specific benchmarks. If we have to add benchmarks, fine, but I would rather us add or look at how we can move around language and not remove benchmarks, if that makes sense. Only because of, again, some of those that we specifically want to keep in, in what the Innovation District can and should be able to bring. So I, I just want to make that noted publicly again, and I'm, I'm pretty sure you can help me to do that. Thank you. And as far as we're looking at, how many staff members do you have, Ms. Bourne?
Three.
Okay. How many do you plan on adding?
The, we anticipate, it's in the proposal, we anticipate adding several more, about five more, I think, is the total. I don't remember exactly the organizational chart, but we have anticipated in these next two years. And we're doing interviews again and, and visiting other Innovation Districts to see what staffing has been most successful for them. So we forecasted out for our proposal and that's what we're aiming for.
What other Innovation Districts have you traveled to?
I was in Boston last week. I was in St. Louis a couple of weeks before that. Been to Houston, Sacramento, Salt Lake. My staff's been to Albuquerque. Will be traveling to Austin, Philadelphia, and potentially Research Triangle.
And I do want to continue to stress, and we've had this conversation a couple of times, as we look at diversity of staff, I want us to continue to look at the diversity of our board for the Innovation District because that board will also determine a lot of the things that will be done, especially to aim to help the Innovation District meet those benchmarks. And it's going to take the diversity of the board to do that. So I want to continue to encourage that participation and especially from the members of the community immediately in the area of Innovation District to be a part of these conversations since we weren't able to get them on these subcommittees that needed to be. Okay. And so I just wanted to make sure that expectation is also noted as far as what we'd like to see for the Innovation District. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have some additions I'd like for us to consider if we could. As I'm reviewing this, there are two words missing, I think, students, schools. And I'd like to see how we could add that because I heard about coding all these sorts of opportunities that are educational and career, but I think we really got to be very intentional about connecting our young people to this knowledge and these career opportunities. So what's that look like? Am I just missing that here? If I am, I am, but I'd like us to figure out how we can be very intentional about tweaking that language if I'm not missing it.
I also do not know about adjusting language or what language could be adjusted. In practical terms, we are doing those things right now. So we have groups working with students and parents and faculty in schools in Northeast Oklahoma City. We're having conversations and meetings where we're going to the schools and meeting with parents, students, and faculty to hear about their STEM interests, their STEM concerns. And we are also launching an entire marketing campaign in Northeast Oklahoma City schools for families, workers, students, all about career opportunities and career pathways, and then also working with career tech universities, Rose State, OCCC, to kind of concierge that pathway so that the awareness is increased, the interest is increased, and the pathway is created for those opportunities.
I think that's great. Couple of follow-ups. One, can, can, I don't know if the whole council's interested in this, but I know I'm very interested. If I could receive a bit of an update on who we've talked to so far, like which specific institutions?
We would be happy to, yes, provide that.
That would be wonderful.
Absolutely.
And then ongoing, if you can keep at least my Word Two office updated, that would be helpful. And then have you all had any contact, engagement yet with the Oklahoma City Youth Council members?
I don't know that I have my staff. Yeah, no, we have not.
They'd love to hear from them.
Okay, absolutely. That's helpful. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. I'm already working with them on some other stuff in terms of connecting them. Well, let's just say trying to help figure out how we can connect their classmates to the OCCC's and the Metro Tech's of the world and the tuition-free programs that exist. So I think them having the opportunity to talk with you both this current class and then the upcoming, I think this needs to be built in institutionally with OKC Youth Council is what I'm saying. And then you mentioned the career tech, so you're already talking with Metro Tech, I'm guessing then?
Yes, we work closely with them. We've even done tours at Rose State and OCCC and even went out to Pryor. Like we've been, we've been traveling around and really observing and interviewing the programs that exist and the opportunities for connection that don't exist now with Northeast Oklahoma City in particular. So yeah, we have a lot of exciting things going on.
Mind-blowing what they're doing at Metro Tech with the robotics and all this stuff. So absolutely being intentional with Northeast OKC and their students. I would hope that makes its way OKC-wide. I know we have a lot of need within Word Two for our students. And I guess that's what I'm asking for is I think this needs to be kind of a citywide thing too, intentional about Northeast for all the reasons we know and long overdue. But I'd like to see this be a citywide effort when it comes to our students.
We agree for a couple of reasons. One, we consider ourselves a citywide organization, right, inclusive of the entire city. Also, the growth that we have and the growth that we anticipate, we will need a very robust workforce to meet those demands, and that requires participation by our entire city. So, and we have been working on that. We have an Innovation Day that we're planning for the fall for high schoolers, and it is citywide to come to the Innovation District and have experiences and simulations in STEM fields, so.
Yeah, please keep, again, Word Two's office update on that, and if that's something I might be able to even attend and promote, I'd be happy to do so. But yeah, any of this educational part of this, I would very much like to be engaged. I know you're serving councilman on the MAPS4 stuff right now on their board. So does any opportunity to engage me as a teacher?
I appreciate that.
I would really, I would appreciate that. And are you all already collaborating with the Subcommittee, the neighborhoods with the youth centers? Are you already kind of thinking overlap here?
We have, with the youth centers specifically?
Oh, yes.
Or, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you were asking.
The youth centers aren't, we're really not to that point yet, but there's certainly an opportunity for that.
Huge opportunity, just like I toured the Metro Tech and saw what they're up to. You go to Boys and Girls Club and you see robotics, you see all kinds of stuff. My God, also Dove Academy, I toured, those kids, sorry, this is the sort of, I get excited about this and then there's a little bit of frustration because there's so much happening in the community right now that if we were collaborating a bit more, I think there's so much potential. But Dove Academy off of 23rd Street, I did a virtual tour with those kids. Those kids are doing everything from robotics, STEM education, community gardening. They would love to talk with you all. But the youth centers need to be involved with this. Once we get to that place, that needs to be something we're already baking in here. So, sorry, a lot of passion there, but thanks.
Well, I do want to forementioned though, the aim and goal is initially, and the priority is Northeast Oklahoma City and those schools. So I do want to, I understand what you're saying, but I do want us to make sure we keep that at the forefront because even for the TIF, as far as the Innovation District TIF, it names Northeast Oklahoma City schools that Innovation District should prioritize in these same efforts. And we have the Willoughby Johnson Recreation Center that is currently being built in Northeast Oklahoma City, so there's plenty of opportunity to begin those conversations as far as programming that you were referring to in those educational components that could also come along for us to look at how this particular center can also influence those other centers that are coming up under our Parks Department or whoever may operate those different centers as well. So I just wanted to make mention of that only because of the writing that is very specific to Northeast Oklahoma City and those, the education component.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, there's no further questions or comment. We can adopt items A and B together under the OCPPA agenda. Got a motion and a second. Passed unanimously. All right, we'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council. We are on page three of your printed agenda, and we are at item nine, the consent docket. There are no scheduled presentations, but is there any items that a council member wishes to pull out for separate vote or separate comment or question?
Item nine, AI.
Okay.
Mayor, I just have, and we've already done some background work on this, I just had a little bit of confusion with AD that I, maybe they sent me an email, but I've been sick for the last week and a half, so I haven't.
What was the item, I'm sorry?
AD. If I could hear a little bit more about, I just have a follow-up question.
Are you saying AD is in David?
I am, David.
Okay, got it.
Mayor. And then item AH, just that's a very important project that the public will want to hear about, and relatedly AN, and that's what I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If that's all, we'll take them in order, and we'll actually, I think we'll start with a citizen who signed up to speak, Joy. No? Joy waves. So we'll move on then to item AD, Councilman Cooper.
Yes, hi. So Councilwoman Hammond and I have spent considerable time with staff, and I really appreciate their time and knowledge. But I just had a follow-up. I know that staff's going to come back to the councilwoman and myself regarding some possibilities when it comes to different parts of this project. I just wanted to make sure that the approval of this project today doesn't preclude any revisions that you all might come back to us and say we want to do this, that, or the other.
Of course. Debbie Miller, I'm the Assistant Director for Public Works. I can answer your question about that. Part of the preliminary report that's on the docket for today has some additional items that the consultant is going to investigate, which includes some pavement improvements, traffic calming, pedestrian improvements throughout the area. So approving this report today will allow the consultant to move forward with the plans, and we will bring those back to you with final decision.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. And again, I really value you all's time and work on this, and thank you to the councilwoman as well for their time.
We'll stay with you, Councilman Cooper, on item AH.
Such an exciting project. Welcome back to the podium. But yes, a lot of community and of course, the surrounding neighborhood, a lot of interest from them. So just tell us a little bit about this increase here, please.
This is a change order for Bell Isle Library up on Villa. This is a final change order before we bring it for final acceptance. The project is substantially complete. It's a 2017 bomb project, and we do have a grand reopening next Friday at 3:30.
Is it next Friday? I thought it was April.
The 25th. I may have the wrong date. You're right, it may be April.
April 8.
I am so sorry. I apologize.
Oh, you almost made my heart jump into the crowd.
It is. On my schedule is April 8, yes.
April 8, I apologize.
No, you're fine. You're fine. If that's the worst thing you do, then.
Okay.
But yes, thank you for that update. We're all looking forward to that attendance, so.
It's a great project.
Is that AN then?
Yeah? No, actually. We'll come back to you, Councilman.
Thank you.
AI, Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I know we have amendment number one and change order number four. I guess my ask is trying to understand the decrease of $160,000 as far as our parks are concerned and what that consists of.
And this is a project with several parks throughout the city. This amendment and change order actually adjusts all of the quantities to reflect the as-built conditions in the park. Is there a particular park? What happens is when they have the plans, they'll have quantities, and then as they get out into the field, they'll have to be adjusted. And that's what this actually does, is to reflect what actually was built.
Okay. I guess just my personal view of looking at certain parks, depending on where they're located, of additional funds and some being lessened, almost the same amounts, you know, clearly those are just some concerns when you go to some of these parks and you're trying to understand what that looks like in relation to what we're seeing. So that's really what my concern was, really. And maybe there's a way to schedule a different, another meeting outside of this meeting today to kind of go more in-depth of specific parks and specific asks, so I would like to do that.
Okay, I'll get that scheduled.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then AN.
Back to that library. Just outside of it, I can't tell you all, we received so many, well, I guess I can tell you, we received considerable outreach from the neighborhoods deeply concerned about the walkability, the ability of residents to cross from Northwest Expressway from one side to the other to access the library. And so this project is a long time coming, if you wouldn't mind telling us just a little bit more about it.
Sure. This is the preliminary report for pedestrian improvements for Northwest Expressway and Villa Avenue. This project will provide all legs of the intersection to be improved for pedestrians. It'll include crosswalks, ADA ramps, and the pedestrian signals, and we hope to begin later this year.
I just think, to me, this is so exciting for the, yeah, for the residents, it's exciting, and for the students who are right down the road from the library as well at Bell Isle. So just thank you for that update, and to the public, I was glad to be able to provide that to you.
And we're still talking about AH?
Oh, nope, we skipped on down to AN.
AN, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You know what we're talking about, right? Right in front of the, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Did you want to say something about AH, Mark?
Nope.
Okay.
Kind of confused on where we were, I'm sorry.
We are now in the posture of potentially voting.
I did, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
BF, I know there's an Educational Service amended agreement. I wanted to hear more about that and if possible.
Okay. Do we have anyone here that can speak to that, Craig?
I think Paul Bronson, the General Services Director, is here. He may be in the back and may need a second to come up on this one. I know it allows us to get training, it makes training available for us when we're doing improvements to understand what the requirements are with ADA, and so it's just allowed for this training. Go ahead.
Good morning, Paul Bronson, General Services Director. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I was just asking if we could hear more about this training and how it relates to those that we work with.
Sure. Back in, way back in 2008, the council adopted ADA Transition Plan. And part of the requirements that were adopted within the transition plan were for the city to set up a training program for not only city employees, but for contractors, for consultants, both architects and engineers, to make sure the improvements that were being designed and built specifically within the right-of-way in Oklahoma City met the ADA law. So for a couple of years, at the very outset, we contracted with OU, and we had a couple of different classes for the first couple of years. But since 2017, we have been working with OCCC to provide the venue and the training. Now, the curriculum is developed by the City of Oklahoma City and our ADA coordinator, Keith Wilkinson, and he actually teaches a class. And there's two types of classes that you can take, either in-person or online. that you can take, either in-person or online. You can take the initial certification course, which is good for three years, and then after three years, you have to come back and be recertified. And what this really does, it helps our architects and engineers that actually do the design work to make sure that the improvements that are being designed are compliant with ADA requirements, and at the same time, it educates the contractors that are actually out there building it to do it right, so to say, the first time, so when we go back and inspect, we don't have to have the contractor tear it out and do it right. So it really saves a lot of time, it saves a lot of money, and like I said, we've been working with OCCC since 2017, and this is just the new agreement for the next year.
I appreciate you describing that, and the reason I was interested in this is, as we continue to talk through human rights and the aspect of what that looks like, we're already doing some of that work, and it's being incorporated in how we have those that develop with us in this process, so I do appreciate that, and I wish we would have been able to talk through this as we were talking through our Human Rights Task Force, for us to realize some of those other things that we are doing to also incorporate and ensure that we're working together in that aspect, so thank you very much.
Sure. All right. Well, that concludes all the items that anybody had pulled out, so we can take a motion on the consent docket if the council so desires. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. All right, item 10 is a concurrence docket. We have items A through J we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11 is items requiring separate votes. Item A was deferred. We have a resident who signed up to speak on the kind of the group of items, Joy Reardon, but she is not in the room. Item 11B is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 8500 Silver Crossing going from O2 with AE1 Airport Environs Zone 1 overlay to the I2 with AE1. Did he ask you to carry that? Great, go ahead, Councilwoman Young.
Thank you. Has anyone signed to speak on that one?
No.
All right. With that, we'll move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. 11C is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 11100 North University Avenue going from R1 to R2. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. So this is, for those who are following along, going to permit a two-family duplex development, and I would move for its approval.
Okay.
Will move for its approval, in fact.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11D is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at Southwest 104th Street going from R1ZL to PUD 1870. This was deferred from March 1st. Councilman Greenwell, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, since that time, I've had the opportunity to speak with the developers, and I have no further questions, and this was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, and I also recommend approval by the council at this time.
Okay. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11E, ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 13000 Southwest 15th going from PUD 1774 to PUD 1876. Councilwoman Young, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning Commission recommended approval subject to the summary of technical evaluations. Having, seeing no one protesting today, I'm going to move for approval.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. 11F is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 9717 Southwest 29th Street going from PUD 1128 to PUD 1877, and Councilwoman Young, someone has signed up to protest.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could have the applicant and the protester come forward, we'll have the protester co first and then the applicant to respond.
Hi, Timothy Beetz. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here on behalf of some concerned citizens that surround the area. We have approximately 180-something signatures of residents surrounding the area that object to the proposed PUD amendments, and the reason for this is there's several changes that we feel do not appropriately represent the surrounding community, that is, that it's going to more than triple the number of residents in a cert-, in the area directly surrounded by R1. Those areas are limited, there's about 24 houses, 23, 24 houses that can fit in that amount of area. The amendments as proposed, they're allowing up to 80 townhomes duplexes in this area, whereas the surrounding area that significantly increases the number of people. Now, the problem with this is, and in our objection, we cite the elementary school that is directly catacorning from this, the principal has sent out, has to send out numerous emails reminding parents, hey, pay attention to the driveways, pay attention to traffic, we're backed up here, we're having issues. So what they're asking here is they're wanting to add another 80 living units in this particular area, which is not only going to increase the traffic in there, it's going to, you know, create the inability for the parents that are already trying to walk their schoolchildren to school, get through there, watching out for traffic issues like this. While the area is currently zoned commercial, the residents, when they bought these homes, moved in there, they anticipated that, they were okay with that. The proposed amendment to allow this PUD not only changes the setback options for what would normally be allowed in an R2 situation, from being, what was it, 60 feet from R1, and changing the heights, they want to limit it back to 15. Then in addition to that, they want to change the height requirement, which would normally be restricted to 20 within that type, that space of the 15-feet setback, they want to increase that to 35. So what this is doing is it's increasing the concern for these families that have bought these homes in there, they have small children, while they were prepared for, you know, in a commercial establishment, they would have plenty of parking and be able to accommodate a traffic during the day and things like that, that they want to avoid this, moving this large number of people in there. And what we're objecting to is not changing the zoning necessarily and allowing these duplexes in there, but the way that they're wanting to, because the setbacks, the height requirements, the number allowed in there is what causes the problem here. So what we've objected to, one, either don't allow the height increase, which is going to put the two-story houses overlooking these one-story, which all the neighbors in there have built one-story houses, that's what they wanted in this area, but, two, to, if the setback isn't limited, then reduce the height, so, you know, don't allow both, don't allow a reduction in the setback and an increase in the height, one or the other would be acceptable, and limit the number of things. The other concerns that we have is the entrance onto Southwest 29th, how that's going to apply in the original request, they wanted a tract one, a tract two, both would have driveways in, one still remaining commercial. I think the Planning Commission objected to that, said, no, it's going to be reduced to one. But the problem is, even in this proposed amendment that you see up there, they show this drive-out on the back going over to South Morgan Road, well, that's not in their final proposal, that's, they'll try to obtain that, or they'll provide an emergency turnaround, and that's where our concern comes in. That puts all this traffic back out onto Southwest 29th instead of routing some of it off onto Morgan Road, and there's no guarantee that they can do that, what we've seen in the proposal, it's just, we're going to try to do it, and if we can, we will, if not, we're going to make a turnaround and put it all back out on 29th. And so that's where these concerned citizens come in, is it changes not only the dynamics of the neighborhood, and one of the other things we want to point out is the facade on these buildings. In this particular area, all these homes are brick, masonry, rock, you know, things like this. Well, the proposed amendment allows them to use cement board, up to 70% of the structure is what we're reading in this, and so, while you've got all these homes, even the Casey's that is in the area, which is all rock and brick facade, and no cement board, they're wanting to propose these duplexes that could be substantially covered in cement board, which does not match the surrounding facades, the intent of the neighborhood, what the people were seeking when they moved in there. It just changes, this proposed amendment as written changes everything about this community and how these residents have chosen to live and how it's going to affect their day-to-day lives, and so that's our objection in a nutshell.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Box.
Yes. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. So, I think it's important to take a look at how the site is zoned now. It's in a very old PUD that would allow pretty much full-scale C3 development, so what you can expect with C3 development is, as adjacent to these neighbors, would be the unfortunate side of the commercial development. What that means is, you could have fast-food restaurants, where are they going to put the grease traps, where are they going to put the dumpsters? They're going to put it up against the back fences of those residential units. What we seek to do is a downzone, so what we seek to do is take this from heavy commercial that's currently allowed up against those residences to a residential development. This is a townhome-style development, this is what you see here on this site plan. He mentioned setbacks. It's worth noting, we actually require a 15-foot setback along the north and the east, and within the 15 feet, we are required to have 10 feet of that to be a landscape buffer. That is a more aggressive buffer than what the code requires for commercial next to single-family. So we're actually exceeding what you would expect to see in commercial next to residential, and here, we're residential next to residential. In terms of the height, the 35-foot height that we seek in this PUD matches the height regulations contained within the R1 district, so we actually match the height regulations as they exist to the north and to the east of us. He mentioned the facade. If you look at the facade requirements in our PUD, the language we require is that standard 70% masonry product. That exceeds the facade requirements for R1 because there are no facade requirements, so their homes being brick is exactly what we will do here. The fact that cement board is allowed, a cementitious product, is a facade material that is considered to be quality and is a masonry-style product. So, we don't seek to build units that aren't in keeping with the area, in fact, our PUD requires more strict facade requirements than exist to our north and to our east. There was a lot of discussion at Planning Commission, that's why you see all of the TEs here, all of which were agreed to, and the ones that are underlined were ones that were added. As it relates to the westward expansion, this TE was generated from a combination of Planning Commission and fire services, so that we either have to connect to Morgan Road in Phase 1 or provide adequate emergency turnaround as approved by Public Works. It is worth noting that Morgan, Cindy, would you mind going back to the site plan real briefly? Thank you. You have a, what appears to be almost a brand-new, fully signalized intersection right there at 29th and Morgan Road, and so what we think we're doing is providing what, you know, standard planning practices would have. You have the intense use of the corner, that being a gas station, and it's common that you would expect to see some form of residential past that, that perhaps more dense than traditional single-family, and then once you get past that bubble, you get to the single-family residential. Most of the Planning Commission, it was unanimous approval, most of the Planning Commission was very vocal in this application in describing the fact that this is a better scenario for the neighbors. If you, if you got to choose a townhome development in your backyard or back-of-house commercial with grease traps and dumpsters, my guess is that the majority of people would choose a well-constructed townhome development. This is more compatible than what is allowed today under the current PUD. So, staff recommended approval, it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and again, Planning Commission was unanimous in the recommendation for approval.
I've got a couple of follow-up questions. As we're looking at this site plan and looking at these technical evaluations, one of the things that the TE says is the driveways on Southwest 29th Street shall be limited to one. Do I not see two here? I see one going back into the townhomes and then one further to the west. What is, what is in that area?
So this site plan is what was filed with the application. Staff had requested a single access point, which we agreed to at the Planning Commission stage, so this will have to be changed prior to seeking permits, but yes, we will limit the curb cuts to one within this PUD.
And are you expecting it to be the one to, further to the east, or have you decided yet?
My guess is it will be the one to the east, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, why is there a TE that says any drive-through order speaker shall be located a minimum of 150 feet from residential use?
So in tract, so we've broken the PUD into two tracts. Tract two is the one that is immediately adjacent to the R1. Tract one is that piece on 29th. The fast-food drive-through use was included in the PUD. This was an effort to shield any speaker from the to-be-built residential pieces within this PUD.
Okay.
That's been a, has become kind of a standard practice of Planning Commission to limit the drive-through speaker portion and window portion from at least 150 feet from any residential use.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Yes, ma'am.
With all the information presented, I feel like this is in conformance with all the things we would expect it to be, and so I'm going to move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Joy, you had signed up, I called your name out earlier, you'd signed up to...
I was trying to read you out.
Oh, quite all right. Do you want to make your statement in regards to the zoning case?
I'm trying to go as you go.
Okay. Well, I'm saying we're almost about to exit the zoning cases, so you're-
Well, don't miss a lot of it, so.
Okay. Item 11P is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. It's a special permit to a funeral and interment service use in the I2, moderate industrial district with the AE1 Airport Environs Zone 1 overlay. This is at 4201 Southwest 109th Street. Councilwoman Young, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. With all that, I'll just move for approval. Which item is this?
Wait, what did I, did I skip a whole page?
Yeah, you skipped a page. Did you top six?
Sorry. Just flipped wrong. Sorry, everyone. Well, we're going to hear that one again in a minute, but now we're on 11G. Way to roll with it, Councilwoman Young. All right.
That's one of the one.
Ordinance on final hearing. This is at 9229 South Simmeron Road going from, that was wishful thinking on my part, South Simmeron Road from AA to PUD 1879. Still with you, however, Councilwoman Young.
Yeah, and you said P, and I heard G, so. Okay, so this one, Planning Commission recommended for approval subject to summary technical evaluation, or, yes, and the E's might be accepted, so hearing no protests, I'll move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11H is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 1,000 Northwest 50th going from SPUD 662 to SPUD 1367. Councilman Cooper, there is someone who has signed up to speak that is neighbor.
Well, neighbor, come on up.
This is Ron Pfizer.
Ron Pittsir at 917 Northwest 49th Street. Unfortunately, I'm not be able, I'm not able to be joined by my neighbors at 917 and 923, but they wanted me to speak on their behalf. Anyway, I shall speak from my point of view. First off, we've been in the neighborhood a long time, Douglas Edgemere neighborhood, we love it, and we've been working with the developers on that particular piece of property that wraps around from 49th all the way around to the fire station on the side. We've been doing this for many years, they know what we were kind of expecting, they built a lot of things into this PUD, I'm very happy to see that they've done that, including the lighting and things like that. One factor, though, that comes to bear is the request for a drive-through with speaker, and this backs right up, and, you know, this is not a classic case of NIMBY, I know it sounds like it, I, this, my property backs right up to where the speaker's going to be. This, my property, backs right up to where the speaker's going to be. I can throw a rock and hit the thing where they're going to put this. But it actually goes back to the agreements that we had had in the past with the developer. Like I said, they've kept their word almost exclusively. They've done a really good job on this, but not totally. We were out several thousand dollars for when they abandoned, we're the last three houses on that wall there that separates that property. They abandoned our backfill and our fencing and everything else. We had to pay out of our own pocket to do this. So we've been on guard on this project for a little bit. We are not against progress. In fact, we welcome another business to come in there. There used to be an insurance company there. Fantastic neighbors. Hideaway, one of the best neighbors you can have. Good people. All we ask is the neighbors on the other side of our fence, the wall, our fence, be as good to us as we want to be to them. And it all comes down to noise and noise mitigation. I prefer that the council, if you see fit, to table this until we can get more aesthetic mitigation procedures talked about. We missed the initial meeting. One of our long-term watchdogs who are part of this had to leave our community, 50 years in the community. I've been there 15 years. My other neighbor, 30, the other neighbor, 25. We're all long-term residents. The thing is that we missed that first meeting. I never got the notice. I got the second notice, that's why I'm here. But I'm not blaming anyone for that, not whining about it at all. We embrace the idea of businesses coming in, job creation, all of these things. We want it all. But noise mitigation is where the problem is. We fully embrace the idea of a business that comes in, food business without a speaker, or a speakerless drive-through, which those do exist. Pull up, the sign says, you know, make your order at the window. Yes, it slows down progress, but what we're really worried about is idling traffic noise, which will increase, and the speaker noise. Because right now, we have destination point traffic to hide away, very minimal noise. You can have that parking lot full back there. We don't get a lot of noise from that because they come in, they park, they're in the building, they come out, they go. It's not a problem at all. We really appreciate that. But we've talked about no outdoor speakers. In fact, Hideaway located their food court, the outside eating area, on the other side of the building at our request because it faced western, and it did not allow for music or noise or anything, like that to filter back into our neighborhood. They're very good neighbors. And in this case, this is what we need. All we want is a pursuit of happiness, everyone's happiness, both sides, both sides of the fence. If we can't table this, we ask that, again, that they do a no-speaker provision, which I believe is covered under 83, 8300.35? 8300.35? The 8300.36 is with the speaker. We prefer not that, but if they're going to do that, if you guys insist on going through with this, we ask that there is a sound baffle, a mitigating sound baffle along the line of traffic. We would appreciate that. And/or just raise the wall a couple of, three blocks. This is a masonry wall. It would only encompass those three last houses because that is the cone of noise that we have back there. We've gone out there and we've walked through this whole scenario. The wall was originally designed as sight screening only. It was not designed primarily for noise mitigation. It's a secondary factor. Because again, we had destination point traffic. Highway, I'm excuse me, Northwest 50th Street has been opened. We're getting a lot more traffic there, so we've got ambient background traffic noise. We're adding that idling traffic and adding that speaker noise is going to really deteriorate our life. Yes, it's going to impact three families, okay? That's what it's going to impact mostly, three families. And I know it sounds like classic NIMBY, but let me tell you, you have one of these in your backyard, you're going to think the same way. We're not against promotion, we're not against advancement in the development area. We just need good neighbor practices reflected back to us. That's all I've got to say. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
First, thank you for the context. I also want to say, as I mentioned briefly earlier, I've been sick for literally 10 days. It's not been fun. So my next round of thank you is to council staff, Boyd Fulton, who reached out to me around 4:00 PM yesterday to let me know that you had sent your email at 3:30 about these concerns. I wouldn't have caught it because I haven't, I've not been able to read an email.
Right. I understand. We're not, we just got wind of it on our end, so...
That also concerns me. I'd like to, I'd like for you maybe to, I'd like to learn a little bit more about how it came to be that a Planning Commission meeting and notification didn't make its way to the appropriate people. I find that very concerning. But thankfully, thankfully again, I wasn't just being kind when I said thank you to Boyd publicly. I really mean that because what that set in motion was me being able to reach out to said representative for the developer. Mark, would you mind coming up and chatting with us, giving us a little bit more context? There's another person I think I owe a lot of thank you to, and that's my Planning Commissioner, Janice Powers, who, because some of you missed the opportunity to address the Planning Commission, Janice, like myself, remained steadfast in defending our neighborhoods. And she did a lot of background work, and Mark has educated me on that about a week ago and then brought it back to my attention last night. So let me just, the long and short of this is I'm going to request for a deferral so that you two can talk. But Mark, I believe you chatted with me last night and probably have an update for us.
Sure. Thank you. Mark Zitzel with Johnson &amp; Associates, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. Councilman Cooper reached out a little after 5 o'clock last night, let us know that there was a protest. We had gone through Planning Commission with a couple continuances. As Councilman Cooper mentioned, Commissioner Powers was, I think, had some similar concerns. So we worked through speaker location, distance from residences, landscaping, screening. There's an existing brick wall that will be enhanced with evergreen plantings on 20-foot centers on the south side. And so, yeah, I say all of that, Commissioner Powers worked very diligently on behalf of the neighborhood because she's very familiar with this project and has been working on it for quite some time. But with that, we're happy to have a continuance to chat with the neighbors and discuss potential other mitigation measures that we can incorporate.
And I really do appreciate the outreach and your time as well, Mark. So for Ron and Mark, thank you both. About how much time do we need?
I think a deferral for two weeks will be plenty. Our staff and developer are ready to meet with the neighbors either this week or the first part of next. And so we'll have plenty of time to get that document revised and back in the hands of the city staff.
So I'd like to...
That's very acceptable, yes.
That works for you?
I find that very, very acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to do a two-week deferral for this, please, and give them time. And then also, again, I'm concerned about how it's possible that, especially given the history of this area, you're going to find this area has a history involving Aubrey McClendon and CNG. I mean, this was a long and involved redevelopment area. So I find it very concerning that the neighbors weren't aware. Just because one person isn't in the neighborhood anymore doesn't mean that, you know what I mean? Like that shouldn't, one person's removal shouldn't mean that the rest of the neighborhood shouldn't know. And I also know, Mark, in your history, you're really good at the outreach to neighborhoods. I need to better understand, so when you all come back to me in a couple of weeks, I'd like to better understand what happened and maybe hear a little bit more from city on that side, city manager? Thank you for that. So two-week deferral, and otherwise, just, I really want to thank you both, but Mark, thank you too. And then I disappeared into watching Batman and Robin because I needed something really dumb to get through being sick, so, anyway. I'm just waiting, it won't, I'm not just rambling, it's not letting me do the thing. There it is.
I just want to say one last thing, and that is that truly, the developers, except for the minor problem, well, the last finishing of that backfill problem, have been very good. And over the years, we've worked very diligently with them, and we appreciate the idea. Hideaway came in, we appreciate all of that, and we think it brings a lot to the neighborhood. Because before they came, there was a dilapidated car wash, there was a dilapidated convenience store on the corner that would, I mean, had potholes that would swallow cars whole. I'm being facetious here, but I mean, geez, this place was, it was terrible. And there was a nice insurance company behind us, that was a great building. It's the first thing Aubrey McClendon destroyed. But anyway, that's another story. Leveled it. But the thing is that here we are, fast forward, and we really do appreciate the efforts that they have expended on this, and we hope that we can, we can reach agreement on this.
Absolutely. Thank you both.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to defer this item for two weeks. This is item 11H. We are speaking now. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That'll be on the next agenda.
Enjoy your chat.
Everyone.
Joy, would you like to...
Yeah, I did want to speak on this issue.
Okay.
I didn't get a chance to actually see where it was at.
Okay.
There is an active firehouse next to the property. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay. A little speaker isn't going to make enough noise that the firehouse does. If you want to, if you want to say about the decimal levels and stuff and the disturbance, if you check and see the run logs and everything for the firehouse, it will make more noise and more standing whatever compared to what the little speaker box at a drive-through. If you go to any McDonald's, anything like that, you, a lot of times, you could barely hear what they're saying out of that. It goes back to what I've said before, not my backyard. That's what the whole thing is. They don't want, they want all this concession, and it's just like people years ago buying property along interstate. Now you've got, you've got to put up noise screens. That's what this is really about. Where developers got to spend thousands and thousands of more dollars because it inconveniences neighbors when you've got an active firehouse right there. Are they going to, are they going to start complaining because the firehouse is there?
Okay. Thank you, Joy. All right. Item 11I is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 1734 Northwest 13th, going from R2 to SPOD 1372. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, this and the next item are both to allow duplexes on these lots, so I will move for approval on this item.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11J is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 1511 Northwest 11th, going from R2 to SPOD 1373. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, similarly, this is just to allow a greater level of density on the lot, so I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11K is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 912 West Britton Road, going from C4 to SPOD 1374. Councilman Cooper.
Is anyone here to speak on this item?
No one has signed up.
Oh, that's too bad. This is an exciting item. This is going to take an old theater and possibly be able to do a brewery, distillery, tasting room, event center. In fact, there's someone who can speak on it. There they are. Go on, you give us that. You can give us better than I can.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. So you said it all. The purpose of this, it's owned C4, the irony in that is the taproom and distillery and brewery are not permitted under C4. So we had to come in with an SPOD to take out a bunch of uses but then add the ability to have those two uses. So that is the primary purpose of this. This is in the middle of the Britton District, so it's actually split. The north side of it is Councilwoman Nice's ward, and the south side, south side, is your ward. So this is consistent with the type of uses I think the city is trying to encourage in this district, and we hope this will be the next one to come online and be good.
And then I had asked you about a timeline of, for the project.
So assuming that this was to be approved today, the goal is to have this open to the public by sometime this summer.
And did I hear a projector, a projector, being able to screen films as possible?
Sure. So they're looking at the possibility of having a digital projector in there for screenings and things like that.
Good. And then the other thing that I think was very important from the technical evaluation part here, that I just want to say publicly to remind everybody, was that, quote, "In the event new sidewalks are required, they shall be five foot wide, six foot wide if constructing abutting the street curb and meet the City of Oklahoma City requirements." The main thing here, in other words, was that we don't interfere with what's coming with the street enhancement, and we don't know what the particulars of that street enhancement are going to be yet in the Britton District. But we know that pedestrian safety and walkability will be a priority. And so I just really appreciate the amount of detail and time that went into making sure that whatever you all do right here doesn't get in the way of those efforts, so...
Sure.
But I'm excited about this, and I wish you all well, and I can't wait to go hang out up there when it's all done, so I'll move with, move for approval.
We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Item L was previously deferred, which brings us to item M. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 17925 North Pennsylvania, going from PUD 1138 to SPOD 1376. Councilman Stonecifer, no one has signed up to speak.
Yeah, the final hearing on this is set for April 12th, and so at this time, I'd move that the ordinance be introduced.
No, today would be final hearing. Today is final hearing.
Okay. It says, maybe I misunderstood, that the final hearing is April 12th.
I'll move, oh, I'm so sorry. All right. I'll move for approval of the item.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes as soon as you are able. Passes unanimously.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
No worries. Okay. Items N and O were previously withdrawn. I forget what, oh, P, we're back, finally. All right. This was an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. It's a special permit to allow a funeral and interment service in an I-2 moderate industrial district that also has the AE1 airport and Byrnes Zone 1 overlay at 4201 Southwest 119th. Councilwoman Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing no protesters and Planning Commission having recommended with the summary of technical evaluations, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11Q is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. It's a special permit to a high-impact institutional use Bible College in the AA agricultural district at 1615 Southwest 96th Street. Councilman Greenwell.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As you indicated, special permit for a high-impact institutional use. There were no protests, and the Planning Commission approved it unanimously. I recommend this for approval also.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11R is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval to close a portion of a platted 10-foot utility easement along Northwest Expressway, et cetera. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak. Oh, he has stepped out. Oh, he has stepped out. This does not seem probably like a controversial issue. Is this yours, David?
Yes. David Box, 522, Call Core Drive. Cindy, would you put the map up, please? Yeah, there we go. Oh, one, one back. So this is a portion of the Oak development, right there at Northwest Highway in Pennsylvania. We've come through on multiple pieces of the zoning, and as of, I believe, four weeks ago, Planning Commission has approved the specific plan for the construction of the hotel, the retail pad sites, as well as the multifamily. If you, could you go back one more, please? One more, I'm sorry, the, the cities. There we go. Oh, there we go. So you can see the, the portion of the right-of-way that is hatched, that is what has already been closed. We had an, an engineering error in our drawings that required us to go do a bit of cleanup as it relates to the Northwest 52nd and 50th piece, and then this stretch along Northwest Highway. There were some title issues that we had to work through prior to coming forward. So this could best be described as a bit of a cleanup. Nothing new here. It's simply putting in place all the pieces that have been shown to you visually, visually for all these years. So staff recommended approval. Planning Commission also likewise recommended approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and Councilman Cooper has returned. Councilman Cooper, item 11R in your ward.
Yes, and I got to have a conversation yesterday with Mr. Box about this and with the developer, so I would move for approval unless anyone has any questions. Okay.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Okay. Now we're at item S, 11S. This is the public hearing regarding the ordinance on redistricting. This is the second of three meetings on this topic. We were at it introduced and explained at our previous meeting. Today is merely the public hearing. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
All right. Well, then we will close the public hearing and move on to T. T1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. Has anyone signed up to speak on that?
No, they haven't.
All right, then we'll advance to T2.
We have someone.
Oh, sure, please.
I'm here about the property at 3401 Spring Lake Drive.
Okay, yep, that is on this item, so go ahead. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Verdale Hawthorne, 6317, Northwest 82nd Street.
Okay.
That property, one of the roof repairs, the hose in the roof, and that was already, that's been repaired the weekend.
We haven't been by yet, but we can definitely get back by there probably this afternoon to confirm that.
Okay.
If that's possible.
I just need to paint, paint and clean up.
It looks like it had a fire at one time.
Right.
Probably quite some time ago, and also have a report that it hasn't had utilities since like 2016. Is that correct?
Right.
So that's, that's kind of the thing we need. Roof repaired on the property, windows, things of that nature.
The roof has been repaired.
Okay. And then the paint on the house is repaired as well?
That this weekend. I've been calling you guys. I can't seem to get any printers to call back, and then they directed me to her supervisor. Been calling for the last week and a half, every day. I can't get a call back.
Okay. I understand. Definitely, I'll give you my contact information.
Okay.
Whenever we leave out of here, and then you can always get ahold of me. I always got my phone with me so I can get back with you.
I'd like to go ahead and defer this for two weeks so we can work through what we need to do for you. We're gonna defer it for two weeks.
Okay.
So we can make sure all of those things get taken care of.
All right, so let's bring that up for a motion. This is a deferral of item 11T1A. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we're back on, I think what is only the remaining item is item T1E at this point. No one had signed up to speak on it, so we'll go on to the resolution found at T2 declaring that that structure is dilapidated. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11U1 is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those struck earlier. Amy, no one has signed up to speak.
No, they haven't.
And that item does not appear again here, so we can move on to U2, which is the resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 11V1 is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed. That item we just deferred does appear here, item H. Councilwoman Nice, would you like to defer that as well?
Please.
Yes.
Okay, so let's bring that up digitally. Got a motion and a second to defer item 11V1H for two weeks. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We're back on the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak.
No.
So we'll move on to 11V2, the resolution declaring that these buildings are abandoned except for the ones previously struck or deferred. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, W1 is a public hearing regarding a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the 2021-22 Second Action Year Plan for Submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and item 2 is a resolution to that effect. Why don't we go ahead and have a presentation, and then I'll ask Amy if anyone signed up to speak.
So Randy Stallings with the Planning Department is here to make a presentation.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Randy Stallings, Planning Department, Housing and Community Development Division. The item before you is a public hearing resolution to approve a substantial amendment to our annual action plan. Our action plan establishes priorities for our federal funds, primarily used for community development projects, includes CDPG home programs, things of that nature. This proposed amendment's gonna reallocate $700,000 from the CDPG Public Facilities Program, and of that amount, $600,000 would be used to make a principal payment on our outstanding Section 108 loan debt. The additional $100,000 would be used to provide further support to our abandoned housing program, which has expended their funds much more quickly than we anticipated due to rising construction costs. CDPG regulations do include certain expenditure guidelines that require us to expend our annual allocations by May 1st of each year. If we're further than one and a half times our annual allocation behind for two consecutive years, then HUD does have the ability to ask for reimbursement of those funds. Given the current climate with COVID and some of the things that are going on, HUD's been very good about working with this, but it does pose a risk to our entitlement money. So what we're proposing at this particular time is to pull that $700,000 from our Public Facilities Program, which has a substantial unexpended balance, reallocating $100,000 to the abandoned housing program, and then $600,000 for a Section 108 principal curtailment. In addition to that $600,000, we have about $347,000 still in that fund for contingency, so our total payment to HUD would be $947,000. So we did run this by the Citizens Committee for Community Development on February, February 15th, and they were acceptable with those terms, and asked, we present this to city council. So that's our recommendation this morning, and I'll be glad to respond to any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Would, could you explain just briefly, I feel like I understand, but when we talk about the $100,000 for the OKC abandoned housing program, is that for, well, just what specific sort of construction cost? We're talking about demolition and removal and these sorts of things?
Yeah, that particular program, we partner with our Development Services, Development Services Department. They go out and board up abandoned housing. So the price of plywood in particular is really skyrocketing over the last few months. They blew through their $100,000 budget pretty much by the end of December.
Wow.
And so we're trying to get them through to June 30th until the next annual allocation becomes available.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
All right, well, we'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution found at 11W2 approving a substantial amendment to the 2021-22 Second Action Year Plan for Submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. You're waiting on word seven? Have you had the chance to vote?
I have.
Okay. How would, how would you like to vote? Or how has it?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Okay, item X was previously struck, which brings us to item 11Y, a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, adopting the film incentive program as an amendment to Oklahoma City's general obligation, limited tax bonds program and policy.
We had a presentation on this previously. There were some amendments that were requested that have been made in the item, and it was just easier really to strike the original item, come back with, you know, the amendments that we had made previously plus additional changes that have been made. Jeff Seymour with the chamber is here to explain the changes.
Yeah, thank you very much, counsel. Just as a quick reminder from several weeks ago, this is the discussion regarding establishment of a new local incentive to support larger budget film and TV streaming projects with production and post-production taking place within the City of Oklahoma City. This is a two-tiered incentive that is based on local sales tax impact of local products and the rebate of a portion of these expenditures back to the city, back to the project as they complete filming and go through a certified audit process. Rebates for films would be between 5 and 10% based on amount of local spend, meeting certain qualifying thresholds of either $500,000 for film, large film projects, or $100,000 in local spend for TV and streaming projects. Other, other components to be included in the scalability of the receipt of incentives would be use of local workforce, use of local and specifically diverse small businesses and vendors, and other factors. The overall goal of this program is to establish Oklahoma City as a competitive market for larger projects upon which we are continuing to build a bigger and broader film industry. I did want to make a couple of notes after our last conversation. A lot of the conversations we heard, I think, in the council meeting and afterwards were concerns about specific impacts in the, in the diverse community and making sure not only we're, we're doing our best to make impacts broadly within the community, particularly with small and diverse businesses, but also helping local, local filmmakers tell their own story and be supported in the ability to tell their personal stories and the stories of their community. And that when we looked at this tool in particular, it is one of many tools that ultimately needs to be stood up in the market to make those things happen. So one of the things we explored more fully with some of the local filmmakers, and we want to talk about here a little bit, is the need for a local grant program, probably a very small series of micro grants to help local filmmakers continue to be able to put first products on the market, or continue to work with other film institutions at the local level to have mentorship and networking within a broader ecosystem to help get smaller projects off the ground. While there was support for this incentive to help make big strokes happen within the industry, there's still other tools that are needed more locally as well. We also see the need for the development of a local and diverse workforce. I think that was very clearly articulated in our last conversation, and while this tool starts to continue to build a base, there's other conversations that have to happen on that front as well. So one of the things that we've also talked about running in conjunction with the establishment of this incentive is the establishment of a local film office. So a couple of the revisions that you would see in your packet, Craig, your point about striking the old, the old ordinance, will be the establishment of new language in the whereas clause, page 2, that talks about specific impacts we're trying to create, to build new trade and digital skills, develop career paths, support state-of-the-art production facilities, expand post-production infrastructure, and create new contractor opportunities for local businesses and service providers while supporting and finding financing tools in addition to this work for local and diverse filmmakers. We also have made some revisionary language, if you look on page 14, to talk about, 13 and 14, to talk about the goals of this program, how, again, it works to build a bigger base. But again, there's other complementary tools that would need to take place in the larger ecosystem to support film and the creative arts moving forward. I think in all the conversations that we had, what we heard was broad support for this tool, but again, a need for a deeper conversation that we see moving forward in partnership with philanthropic partners, private sector partners, and others to establish new tools and to also continue to push for this creation of a local film office as well. So all these things have to really harmonize to provide broad support. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I wanted to give you that quick update.
As we're looking at the resolution, the second on page 2 of 4, I wanted to bring the attention of that whereas, for the city is pursuing the establishment of an Oklahoma City Film Office that can develop such tools. My question, pursuing, I would like a definition of pursuing, and when we can have an expectation of this actually being something presented in front of council. One of the, one of the things that got us to this point in this conversation is while we definitely want to bring broader, broader attention to our city and big productions to our city, we have to cultivate the ones that are here. And we can't do that if we're not giving them leverage and support that they need. And my ask was that before this came back before council, that we had what we were going to do to also cultivate those smaller productions or films or reality shows, whatever the case may be, for the residents and those who have that creative lens and have been doing that work already, and have also been telling the story of Oklahoma City that no one else can tell outside of our, our city and in our, our area. So as we look at when this can come into fruition, I'm hoping that we can have a very set, defined timeline for us to say this establishment of this office is and will take place. And I know even as we're talking through our, our budget process, there's time for us to look at how that can be established and, and seed money for that to go towards that effort in the addition to those philanthropic organizations being able to also add in their, their contributions. But in my opinion, I would hope that we would seed our own fund for us to be able to say, yes, this is a priority for us, just as much as we want it to be for those other organizations and nonprofits that believe in our city and our residents that are doing this work and have been doing this work already.
So the discussions on the film office have been ongoing. We've been talking with the chamber about this, and my expectation as we work through this, we're gonna brief the council on this, and then we will come back with, the recommendations would be to move forward, and that we would have some acknowledgement of that in a contract, and then probably within the budget as well. In terms of the incentive, I think there's continuing discussion and evaluation that we have to have on that. There's limitations of what we can do with city funds on the city side, so I think there's specific funds that would have to be available, wouldn't just be like general fund dollars could be contributed to something like that. Just, we have limitations in terms of giving a gift, but I think we can definitely continue to evaluate that, and like Jeff laid out, continue having those conversations. As we at the film office stood up, that part of that charge would be that we would have these discussions with philanthropic organizations to help us evaluate options that we have and opportunities to provide these kinds of incentives.
And I think even as we look at the definition of GOLT and how it can be and has been defined, that there are opportunities to even, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Look at how even those funds can help to seed that beginning part of, of what we're asking for.
Right, and any funding for that, you're exactly right. Any funding for that would have to be like on the economic development side and a GOLT side or Economic Development Trust, and that would be how we'd evaluate that. side or Economic Development Trust, and that would be how we'd evaluate that.
I really want to thank Councilwoman Nice for the advocacy, and there are many people in the film industry, local film industry here. I don't know all their names, but I really appreciate Assistant City Manager McDermid and Jeff for talking with them. One of them happens to be my good friend and neighbor, Liz Drew, who does electrical work on film sets. And she, and that's rare, by the way, that's a rare role for women, and I'm just really proud of her for adding her voice to this conversation. But, the things that Nikki is talking about, we need to be very intentional in terms of seeding money for these smaller projects, because right now, this $500,000 threshold, we have people, I've learned from talking with people like Liz and Lance McDaniel and everyone in between there, we have people with projects that are $10,000. If they had access to $10,000, the art and the magic they could create and the attention they could bring to our city, South by Southwest is happening right now as a music and film festival right down the street in Austin, and there is international eyes on that city. We can do that, just as much as we're number one in public art, this is an opportunity, and so I really hope that the GOLT is a way for us to seed this. I mentioned Batman and Robin earlier. It is a terrible film. It has on Rotten Tomatoes a 12% critical rating, and from audiences, a 16%. We're talking about out of 100, just so we're clear. It has $125 million budget. So, I'm not really someone who, while I'm hearing from people in the local industry that it's important that we move forward on this project today to be able to bring these bigger productions here, I'm not interested in Batman and Robin and funding $125 million flops and garbage like that. That is a terrible movie. That is, watch it. Go watch it. Go listen to that dialogue. You feel good about that when you watch that movie? So, I don't like giving Hollywood and these multinational corporations any incentive to make trash like that. But I am interested in the Liz Drews of the world and the people who have long called the city home and have not had access to capital to be able to do the work that they need to do. So, the film office is important, and so too is working with the philanthropic sector to be able to do this together, but the city needs to have a stake in this. The city needs to have a stake in it. So, I'll just move forward, but those are my concerns, and I think they're important ones, so thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to share my, or repeat my earlier concerns, that after 30 years of research, there's no evidence that these film incentives produce any economic benefit to the government unit providing those. However, there is strong evidence that workforce development programs do produce favorable benefits to the community, and if there was ever a time where workforce development could benefit a community, it's now. We have more than 35,000 jobs left unfulfilled by putting in a program that could provide, in a sense, immediate, quick training to individuals, kind of like an apprentice program, to where we get them up to the skill level to where they can be employed today, and then the employer and the employee work out ongoing education and training to get them up to a skill level that could be, that's demanded by that particular job. It does several things. It increases the capacity of those businesses that are seeking employees. It allows them to operate at a stronger capacity. It substantially upgrades the standard of living of many of these employees as they move up from their current employment into a new area. And when you take into consideration that impact on the employee and add that, the impact on the family of that employee, you're looking at, with respect to over 35,000 unfulfilled jobs, impacting over 100,000 people. And that increased wages, increased production creates economic activity that in and of itself draws to more business activity. It's just, it creates a snowball, and there are successful instances where this workforce development program has been placed, has been put into place in various communities and had great success. That's where we should be focusing our attention on, on what creates the greatest effect in the shortest timeframe. And so, again, I'm not going to try to convince anybody of that. That's just my personal opinion, and that's why I'm going to vote no on this particular issue. But do encourage the people involved with economic development to look at focusing on a workforce development plan, and, again, it's going to benefit so many people. Thank you.
If you don't mind me making a quick comment to that, to your point, well, actually, all the points that were made, honestly, really holistically agree with everything that was said. You know, to your point, Commissioner Greenwell, you're exactly right. Without a strong workforce development component to all this work, and really economic development at large, we'll leave a lot of folks behind. I think we see this as one of several tools around this industry, but to your point, more holistically, a lot of workforce development work is exactly what we're trying to create formulas for through city, state partnerships, and federal partnerships. The one thing I did want to note, though, around your comment about return on investment, one of the reasons we were really careful to craft this as a pay-for-performance model and based on qualifying expenses is to make sure the city was held whole for its specific return on investment around fiscal impact with city sales tax. So, we're really careful in trying to make sure we didn't follow a model that put more money out than you would potentially receive. I just wanted to make that quick note, but thank you.
And I do appreciate the fact that in your presentation, you did bring out the aspect of workforce development, because I think that's critical.
Sure.
We can't get, we, businesses in Oklahoma City and throughout the country are struggling finding qualified workers, so it makes sense to go into a partnership with them, again, to provide three- to four-week intensive training if those employees are willing to go through that, just to get them up to a level that they could begin working at these various jobs. And then, the employee and the employer takes on the long-term responsibility of continued training and education to get them fully qualified for these various positions, and it would have a tremendous impact on so many people. And I don't want to focus just on the film industry when we've had long-term industries throughout Oklahoma City that are suffering right now in terms of not being able to
Certainly.
Recruit and obtain the necessary employees to really operate at the capacity they'd like to. Thank you.
But, since we are talking about film, I would like to add one more thing. And I hope when we come back to the smaller package, or rather, the smaller levels of investment, councilmen, that's what we have the opportunity to do, because it lets, the example, the way I see this playing out of my mind, is if we have a person here who has a project that it would only take $30,000 to make, right now, that workforce you're wanting to see developed, they're having a very difficult time. If we brought Batman and Robin here on $125 million budget, that workforce you're wanting to see develop, they can't develop on that set. They can't get access to being on that set, and that's even after having an associate's degree in film production from one of our best institutions, O-Triple-C, or another one of our best institutions, the Metro Tech. They're cut out of it. What happens is the big company brings in the workforce. I want to be very clear to everybody, that's why I have the trep, I will vote for this today, but it's why I have the trepidation that I do and why I'm taking our city manager and our assistant city manager and Jeff Seymour at their word today. They're all going to come back to the table later, because if we had someone with a $30,000 budget, there is a community here of local filmmakers. They know each other. They've gone to classes together, and when one of them has a $30,000 project, they hire each other. They hire each other as production assistants, and I mentioned Liz is someone who works in electricity. There's someone at the, there's ranges of electrical jobs on a film set. It's a hierarchy, and that mentorship that you're talking about, the person who starts up here actually starts training the people who are starting off. And as the person trains, they learn more working alongside that mentor, and eventually they become the gaffer. And you could look at the camera department, too. They might be the camera operator, but eventually they work their way up and they become what's called a cinematographer, the person who works right alongside someone like Steven Spielberg to craft the image itself, to light it, and goes on to become nominated for Best Cinematography. You don't see Academy Awards for Best Gaffer, unfortunately, that's a lot of cool work that they do, but they work their way up. But, right now, those people, our local people, are cut out from the big productions. And so, when we all come back, I look forward to unanimous support from this council if we truly do want to develop a workforce, because that's the way we do it. That's what's missing in this moment. So, again, local people are telling me move forward because we've got to build this infrastructure, but they're saying our job is not done until we come back and do these next two steps, the film office and seeding these smaller projects. So, I just had to clarify that for everybody, and if anyone wants to add to that, but that's what's at stake right now. That's how we develop our workforce. Thank you.
And I'd like to actually add to that, and I'm hoping after this conversation that we can get a tour for our council members that are willing and able to the Oklahoma Film and TV Academy that is at Green Pasture Studio, because that is what they do. They do the professional short course training for film and TV right now to develop that workforce that we are looking for, and these are the same folks that have also talked about their concerns and their issues for the members and residents and the folks that work around them in these same places to find work. So, what we've seen, or I personally have been there and heard the success stories of what this could look like for folks just getting in, going through this course, a short-term course, and then being on the production, and with them being able to bring some of those productions because of the people that they know, now we are able to hire from that local workforce. So, there are components that are intact and already going. Yes, everyone needs just a little bit more support in that effort, because, again, this is still new for our city in a lot of different ways, but being able to get the information out to the public as well is one of the things that I don't want to say is lacking, but it could be introduced probably in a different way for folks to realize and understand what these jobs can bring for their families to the point of what you were previously saying. So, again, as we continue to look at this and what GOLT is supposed to also develop jobs, because there's a section in this GOLT that talks about job training and job workforce development, it seems as if there's a way to merge some of those conversations in how this could look for the general public of being able to create a different type of workforce in relation to the film industry.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you so much.
Well, we can take up the joint resolution then, if that is the council's wish. Bring it up for a potential motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes seven to one. And thanks to everybody who worked on this so hard. Okay, we're at 11 Z.1, claims recommended for approval. Executive session is not requested, and we have two here, items A and B. We could approve with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, that concludes our voting for the day. We are now at comments from council, item 12. Word two?
Yes. I wanted to express my love and support for the family of Susan Atkinson. Word two. Experienced, is experiencing such a loss right now with her passing, and Susan dedicated so much of her time and her values and her work and her heart to word two and to the city of OKC as someone who's worked in our planning department. She moved with grace. I don't know what else to say. There was just something about the way she moved and the way she spoke and the wisdom within her and her advocacy for walkability and for people being able to move from their houses to recreation and to specialty stores and good food and laughter, and I can hear her. She was just one of the kindest people I've met since I started working on the Transit Trust and since I became a council member. And I just want to send so much love to her family and to every single person who knew her, and I suspect that laughter will be within all of us and that grace will continue to be there. I've already mentioned to Debbie Martin that come next council, I'd like some sort of, whatever's appropriate that we can do to commemorate her life and her work, because I think she deserves, I know she deserves that, in fact. And so, that will be all I have to say for now. Thank you so much.
Nothing today, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Word four? Word six? Word seven?
Yes, I just wanted to follow what we heard from our convention and visitors of Zach Craig with Florence's for that James Beard Award. I think that is amazing for them to get that type of recognition, and if you have not seen or been to Florence's, I would encourage you to try, try the smothered chicken, and you might get a treat. Usually, Ms. Florence, she's in her 90s, she's in the kitchen cooking. So, that's the beauty of the authenticity of Florence's, because Florence is still living and still working in her 90s, doing what she loves in that kitchen, although her daughter tells her to get out sometimes. She's still in there. Also, in that same lens, wanted to congratulate Chef Black, Andrew Black, with gray sweater and black walnut, because he was also a semifinalist for James Beard Award. So, we had Oklahoma City on the map for these types of recognitions, which clearly now you're probably going to see more folks coming in that are connoisseurs of good food to taste and see what's been cooking in Oklahoma City. I do want to congratulate, before I forget, we, going into this spring break, we had some really good games, and the roof was blown off of the Ron Norick Arena this weekend, and congratulation goes out to 4A state champs classing SAS at Northeast. They beat Tuttle, and I don't know if you've seen the viral video for Millwood, but if you have not, please Google it. They are 3A champs, and they beat Community Christian, and that was with three seconds left from freshman Chance Davis saying and mouthing, "I'm going to make this last shot, trust me," and he made it. For them to win that state championship, so I believe, I know it has gone viral a lot of different places, but just to see that, it gives you chills for a young man to have that much confidence in his game and for the folks to And for the folks to say, okay, we trust the other young man to say, yes, we trust you, and he made that shot. So congratulations to Millwood for that magnificent victory. I was unable to attend, I saw the videos. And the reason I was unable to attend was because I was attending the HBCU Fair informational that they had at Douglas High School. And they had all of the historically black colleges and universities that could come. And they had some from, Jackson State was represented, Fort Valley State was represented, Grambling. So we had folks from all across the southern part of our country representing those HBCUs. And if you do not know, Langston University is the only HBCU that we have in Oklahoma in the furthest west of the United States as far as universities. And my alma mater that I am very proud to represent. And speaking of Langston, I know we were talking about the softball Hall of Fame that's coming as far as the women's softball. The Hosea Bell Red Dirt Softball Classic convened the first weekend in March. And that is the HBCU classic, that softball, that they are able to have at that same complex. So Langston was able to host again. And it gets bigger and better every single year. So we're excited about what is happening and the tourism that's happening across our city and for the folks that are able to bring some of those unsung types of events that we may not get to hear about as much, but still mean a lot to the community and to the city. So happy to talk about those things. Thank you.
Thank you, word eight.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last Friday, I was asked by a gentleman Lance King to attend a ribbon cutting at a new establishment in Oklahoma City called Podego Electric Bikes. And I really enjoyed going to these because I learned things I didn't know anything about, a certain business. And I got to meet Don Costanza, who is the founder of this company. And it's a great American success story in that he lived up on a hill in California. He wanted to ride his bike into town, but he couldn't get back up the hill. So he bought his first electric bike several years ago. Did not like the way it operated, thought he could build a better bike, and he did it. And today, they have 210 locations across the United States. And we are number 208. The ribbon cutting was great. And what they offer, this is just west of Lake Hefner. They offer rentals, or they offer you can buy a bike. And as we all know, we recently changed our city ordinances to allow classifications of e-bikes on our multi-use trails and on our natural trails. So you ought to check this out. It's at 9128 North MacArthur. Like I said, just west of Lake Hefner. And I want to thank Lance King for having this city attend a great event. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're now at item 13, Citizens to Be Heard. We'll start with Joy, if you want to make your way up here. And I've got to step away and we'll let Vice Mayor Stonecypher bring us home. Hi, Joy.
I just wanted to say thank you. A little too loud. We're doing a lot better on ADA stuff. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. New sidewalks and everything else is making a lot better. But I think we can do more. It's great that we're, there's still areas of the city, and Reno being one of them, both out towards, like you're going to the museum, would be great to start looking at that area to make it more accessible for ADA. And then, because it's broken up throughout Reno. The other issue that I'm having, and it's an issue that I keep bringing up, is the scooter issue. Two issues with that. One is it's got, we've got to start holding these scooter companies accountable for them blocking the ramps, sidewalks, and stuff like that. Because it makes it difficult, not only for me, but think about the other disability people. I won't say disability. The ability people, the limited sight, stuff like that, especially down in Bricktown. And my understanding with these scooters is, and you have to have a driver's license to operate them. It actually says it on there. More and more of these younger kids, and I'm talking about everybody from, say, 10 years old that can actually ride them on up, is making it more and more difficult. And it even has it on there that not supposed to be on the sidewalks. Every time I go down to Bricktown and stuff, I'm constantly having to dodge one of the scooters because someone's coming at me or coming from behind me on the sidewalk. I've almost been hit 20, 30 times anytime I go to Bricktown. If we want more tourist and stuff, something, please. Please, think about that.
30 seconds.
Oh, how long?
30 seconds.
Okay. And the other thing is, one other item that I have, is in the wintertime, if we can at least get some 36 inches of snow and ice removal, it would be great, please. It's something that y'all may want to look at. So it, we can, especially with the streetcars and stuff, they'll just clear the thing and not clear it out where people like me or manual chairs and stuff can actually get on the platforms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Ronnie Kirk, please. And Ronnie? Ronnie? I'll let you introduce the next speaker, after you. Thank you.
My name is Ronnie Kirk, from 2328 North Missouri, Ward 7, Oklahoma City. When we had the Merrill bought Merrill bombing, I had two of my educators had a bombing that day. My mother, Lucille Kirk. Mr. George Burns. My mother, she was late catching the bus. Mr. George Burns, he died in the Merrill building bombing. He'd already told me. I told him I had a young lady pregnant. And I didn't think I'd be able to finish school. He's my mechanical drawing teacher. He said, Ron, come back after school, sit down, we'll talk. He said, take all the basics that Douglas has to offer, all the basics, so you learn something. You know? Here in Oklahoma, when you came out your front door, you could see oil wells everywhere. Any direction you want to turn, you could see oil wells. You know, Mick Cornet, he was the mayor at that time. Most of the oil wells, they had, they capped them off. They had an article in the paper years ago. They wanted to cap them off and save the reserves. Back during that time, our number one crops was peanuts and cotton. Today, our number one crop is marijuana. Had the marijuana growers to rotate their crops and grow wheat. Wheat. A lot of the older people had died off, had the farms where they growed cotton and peanuts. Give them some type of grass where the younger people can grow wheat. We've been trying to buy most of our wheat from Russia.
30 seconds, please.
Grow our own wheat. Our own, we got the property, we got the land. This morning, the senators is talking about regulating marijuana. Yes. By having to rotate their crops, have them to grow wheat. It's a smaller crop, but I'd rather be full than high. You know, two weeks ago, we had a freeze. We had 1,100 wrecks before nine o'clock that evening. Wrecks all over the state. You know, when you're high, you bump into something, your mind goes into a trauma. You don't know what's happening. I ain't saying everybody was high, but grow wheat. And the homeless. I was met with the maribolli. Said with about an hour, about two weeks ago. They have five small tiny homes. I said, give them some type of trainer, why not in the tiny homes? Any type of trainer. Give them skills. They already down. Give them something to bring them up. Give them, you know, actually teach them some kind of skills, they can go back into the workforce. They're not all drug addicts, they're not all alcoholics. I lost a home before when I was in the hospital. I know how it is when you lose something, when you're knocked down to your lowest point. So just give them some type of trainer, even in the city. Give them some type of trainer where they can get back into the workforce. Some of them, they need, it's mental, some of them can't do nothing. I understand that. But a lot of them, they want to go back into the workforce. They want to do something for themselves. They just do. Thank you.
Ronnie, thank you very much. You want to introduce our next speaker?
Sir?
Do you want to introduce our next speaker?
Oh, she's speaking there.
Will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay. My name is Mia Kirk, and I live at 2012 North Marley King Avenue. Today, I want to speak on sleep disorders, on how that can mess up a lot of stuff for people. See, most, everybody sleeps with their phones and remotes like nearby them when they sleep. And that's not good because of all that heat from the phone and stuff. So a young man was killed 10 seconds after the police came and shot him while he was asleep. See, when you're asleep, you don't hear anything or like notice anything in the outside world because, so since you're asleep, you won't be able to know what happened. So while he was asleep, the police came and killed him. I forgot. So, yeah. Okay.
Thanks for coming today.
Thanks a lot.
Paulette? You state your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon. Reverend Paulette Legg, property owner, taxpayer, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I have been taking time to get acquainted with you because these are not social places where folk will have an opportunity to get to know one another before sharing very personal and sometimes very private and sometimes not so welcome information. But I want to know you. I want you to know me. And so I take that time to talk to you about who I am. And I first started telling you who I was at the age of five. Military brat, living on base. And having my conscience peaked as a child. As I sat on our living room floor in my home with a bunch of adults all around. My dad was non-commissioned officer, Air Force. I'm an Army at an Air Force base. And we had a lot of folk in our house. And everybody was sitting around, and I had my place on the floor. And we were transfixed watching the TV screen. As most of the people who look like most of you, hoes, beat, and tried to kill, is what it looked like to a five-year-old, people who look like me. I tell you that because I plan to address you until the Lord says different. And I want you to know where I'm coming from. That scene established a place where I would occupy and ride in that seat through my journey of life. And as I looked down that road that was 50 years ago, I... We have seen a lot in that timeframe. At any rate, I wanted to tell you where I'm coming from.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
I've got 2:17 on my stopwatch. And I timed 4.16 with the last speaker. We can deal with that later, but this is taking up more of my time to explain that. At any rate, I plan to come before you and talk to you about observations and things that I've seen, having lived in this state. But been gone for 33 years, I've returned. And I'm going to quote a scripture from the Bible. I have some awe with Oklahoma City and the way you spend our tax dollars and monies. Blessings to you, have a great Tuesday. See you next time.
Thank you for coming today. Our next item of business is adjournment. I don't have a gavel, but we are adjourned.